To order so we could start moving because I was alerted by the city clerk that is hefty three plus hours. And assistance without any additions. So I'm good to roll called and Luke since you're the next on rotation for vice mayor, you'll do the pledge of allegiance if Jared doesn't comes up in the next five seconds. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Um, so I'm calling the meeting to order today. Uh, what's it called agenda for the legislative meeting of Maryland council for the city of Mount Rainier today Tuesday, February seven, twenty twenty three, seven. Um, PM, this is a virtual meeting. Um, we are gonna do a call to order. Uh, Luke Chesek.
Uh, sure, I can lead in the.
You have to say you're here first.
Oh, sorry. I thought, yeah, I'm here.
He's gonna get fired. Jimmy's like, I have a whole year.
I'm here.
Jimmy, you're here. Valerie?
I'm here.
And Jared, oh, there you go. Hi.
I am here. Yep. Sorry about that.
Yeah, you see what happened? Like, uh, Luke is a little rusty for vice mayor. You're gonna have to like help him out there. He's like, I'll start the pledge of allegiance. Um, okay, we have, uh, all five of us are here. We have a full forum. All right. So, uh, moving on to, uh, the second part of part one, uh, pledge allegiance, uh, council member, vice mayor, uh, Sofis, can you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Okay, so you guys have the agenda in front of you. Item number two is review of the agenda. Um, this is a five minute or less. The American Council will review the agenda for the meeting and adding or deleting topics of interest or discussion. At this point, the vice mayor will read the agenda and then, uh, council, please let me know, um, if first you need to add anything. Um, there is one item, uh, the council member, uh, Woodall dis submitted and it could fall into our business because it's a follow up. So she'll tell us what it is and, um, okay. So Jared, go ahead and read through it.
Number one, call agenda, sorry, call to order, pledge of allegiance. Number two, review of the agenda. Number three, mayor and senate council members events announcements. Number four, city managers report. Number five, presentation and discussion on Pepco tree trimming. Number six, presentation by the cert committee. Number seven, presentation on the city's emergency plan. Number eight, public comment. Number nine, closed session summaries. Number ten, discussion and vote on ordinance number ten dash twenty twenty two, rest stabilization. Number eleven, um, second reading adoption of, uh, ordinance number, sorry. Number eleven dash twenty twenty two, amending this code of ordinance in city of Mount Rainier, chapter one D, ethics to incorporate changes required by state law to local ethics ordinances. Ordinance, sorry, regarding conflicts of interest and financial disclosures and to update references to state law. Number twelve, discussion of support to the gateway CDC studio lab project tenants. Number thirteen, discussion on vote on appointment and tree commission. Number fourteen, first reading of ordinance, uh, number one dash twenty twenty three, an ordinance of the council of the city of Mount Rainier. Granted renewal of the cable franchise Comcast of Maryland authorizing a franchise agreement. Number fifteen. Introduction, first reading of ordinance two dash twenty twenty three, budget amendment, number two, number sixteen, discussion will mod, proposed will monitor yellow line turn back. Number seventeen, approval of minutes and, uh, number eighteen. Those are the goals in the closed session according to annotated code of Maryland's, uh, mayor and council of Mount Rainier have the statute of authority closes session under general provisions three dash three or five B. For reasons of subsection one, seven, discuss the appointment, employment assignment, promotion, decide, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation. Of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public by his jurisdiction, any personnel matter that affects more more specific individuals and to consult with council detained legal base, number nineteen adjournment.
Thank you so much, Jared. So I'm gonna start with striking the close session out. Um, council, we're good. We don't need one today, right?
Nope.
Just give me thumbs up and you'll be striked out. Valerie, good. Jared, good. Luke, you're good. Jimmy, okay, so it's a full agreement to strike, uh, the close session out. Um, I do see the letter was added already, so no need to, um, no need to add. Um, like, uh, anything else council that you see that you need to delete out of this list for right now? Or add? I need you to, um. Thank you, Melissa.
My item was already added. It's already good.
Yeah, you're, you're, it's, uh, I think she did a copy and paste of what it is. Okay, um. So the only item that was like written, um, added was item, can you put it up to number ten, uh, Melissa? Oh, thank you so much. That'd be discussion of letter support for the gateway CDC, CDC, um. Studio lab project. We're in council will discuss the letter of support to a gateway CDC studio lab project. So that's, that's, that is what was added. We did as our clerk to. Type it in so that will make a little bit easier to cut some of the time. So council, if we're in agreement of adding that, can we get thumbs up, please? I got Jared, I got Valerie, I got Luke, and I got Jimmy, and I got myself. So we were like, um, on it. Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much. Um, can we, um, okay, council, so do we have a working agenda?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Seeing that we're on agreement, we're moving on to item number three. Mayor and council members event and announcements. So we're gonna start with, um, we're gonna start work too. Last time we started with word one. So Valerie, Jared, uh, Luke and Jimmy, go ahead.
Um, yeah, thank you. So I think, um, in addition to the events that you have already on the agenda, um, uh, the recreation committee is getting ready to. Start planning a five K, uh, for the city of Mount Rainier, um, as well as a potential chili cook off. So just stay tuned. Um, for that, I think the other thing is the, um, community yard sale day. Um, so they're, they're getting ready to plan all those things. So, so those are coming up soon. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Valerie. Jared?
Uh, nothing to add.
Thank you so much. Uh, Luke, Jimmy?
Um, nothing to add right now. Thank you.
All right, Jimmy?
I shook my head, no.
Oh, sorry, Jimmy. You've got out of the screen. Melissa, can you go all the way to the bottom of the agenda?
All right. Off video.
Now you're in video. You got off video.
No.
All right. So upcoming events, we have President's Day, February twenty 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 three, uh, city offices will be closed. Uh, pro, the proposed budget work session, and that was part of the assigned schedule for the budget will be February twenty eighth. Women's History Month, uh, March first, proposed budget for public care, March twenty fifth. Ekhan, April first at the nature center. Election day is May first. Can you switch it up? Uh, this is a reminder that you scholarship deadline, um, to apply is May twelve. Uh, the application is online. If not, you could like reach out to our city clerk. And Mount Rainier Day is May twenty, and we'll be adding the recreation committee on it. So, um, our team has done also a great job of being posting like the, the whole, um. The various committees are meeting also in a host, in a whole, um, polls. Um, so it makes it a little bit easier for people to, um, see it. Uh, we did had a flag raising ceremony. On February first, uh, for Black, um, History Month. Um, so the flag is currently, um, raised in the city of Mount Rainier, be there for the next month. Uh, there are gonna be various activities going on, um, all around us. Uh, Joe is having a meeting, uh, an event actually right now. Regarding, uh, Harriet Tubman and that event will also be shown in, in Hyattville. Uh, PG, uh, Parks and Recs are having a list. The staff has put, um, added all the ones that we have, um, in the calendar. Um, in order for you to, uh, participate. It, it was, um, it was a great ceremony. Uh, we also, um, I also would like to, um, take time to acknowledge that during the ceremony, we held, um, a moment of silence. For, um, Mr. Nichols. Um, we were all very, um. Bit, very sad and distraught, um, um, seeing the video. And the city of Mount Rainier, as well as our police department, continue their commitment to work with our community and make sure that things as such, um, are. Are, are denounced no matter where, where it happens. So, um, you, you continue having the unity between both of us to make sure that happens and. And we have a good team working right now, um, also in the community. So thank you that, um, as well. Um, so as far as, um, those are the events announcements, um, that we have because I've been testifying a lot in Annapolis, but, um. Those are the big ones. Um, so I'll leave it at that for right now, and then we'll wrap it up at the end, um, of the day, but, uh, please, um, engage in the various activities. That the city has and there are committee openings, and you're also welcome to attend committee meetings. Even if you are not a board member, they are also open to the, to the community. Um, the red committee does needs a lot of volunteers, so it's the cities in order for us to like carry through the programs. Okay? All right. So those are the announcements. We're gonna move on to the city manager's report. Uh, we'll present a report for mayor and council. Uh, go ahead. The floor is yours.
All right. Thank mayor and council. So that report was given to mayor and council in January twenty seven. I have few projects that, uh, I'll be talking and give you more information about that. The first project is street and sidewalk, which tool design is working on it. So. And, uh, the project is ongoing and, uh, we're making good progress. And the scope was changed to include division zero action plan in order to be able to apply for. The Department of Transportation SS four A. Grant, which is, which is a safer street, uh, for all. So the project is moving forward. And, uh, hopefully we'll be finishing this project in next few months. So the next one, I got the pot salt, pot salt, the contractor has been selected. And the city attorney and I working with the contractor to get the bond bill, a bond, you know, performance bond. And payment bonds and, uh, hopefully very soon we're gonna schedule, uh, a pre-construction meeting. And, uh, pot salt project should be started sometimes, hopefully at the end of this month. Then we move forward to Memorial Park project. Uh, we have sent everything LID is working. On the project and has sent everything to DPI. We're waiting for DPI to process the permit. And, uh, at this point, the first review has been taken place and we're in a good position. Hopefully we're gonna have. The permit very soon and I'm planning to. To get ready to bid the process, uh, to bid the project out and select the contractor because we have two. Grants that I know that Luke is very concerned about those, DHCD and MHAA. Which I will get it done before June thirtieth of twenty three. And, uh, so this is, this is for the memorial park. The next we have the thirty first street, which thanks to Jimmy got us, you know, five hundred thirty thousand dollars from delegate IV. Tool design, uh, I'm sorry, LID is working on the project and hopefully we're gonna have. The design completed by end of the February and then it will be shared with mayor and council and also we're gonna have a community to be involved. To, to look at the final, you know, plan and make sure that we have heard the community voice in this project. And, uh, so the next one I got the spring park, spring park. Unfortunately, we have a tough time. To have a consultant to work on the well, you know, restoration, Rosio, director of public works has been trying so hard. And, uh, unfortunately, we had a meeting supposed to happen on January twenty sixth. And the consultant didn't show up. Now we're hoping to have another consultant to come and. Have a site visit and see how we can move forward with spring park project. Library reimbursement is the next project and as you know that this reimbursement has been going on for past, you know, three years. I just had, uh, a conversation with Bill yesterday. Looks like it. We're gonna get. The good news is the fifty thousand dollars bond bill has been approved and hopefully we're gonna have that money very soon in the city's account. Next project is Rhode Island Avenue facade improvement. That's, uh, economic development. Department that Mr. Hopkins is working and the project is, is ongoing and everything looks good so far. And hopefully we're gonna finish that one before June the thirtieth. And then, uh, mayor and council has allocated some ARPA funding. One of the project is Joe movement that Joe is working on the project and we have made some progress. And, uh, everything is moving forward as you see hundred eighteen individuals served in, in December. Twenty-two, that's access to the public resources for the community. And so Joe is moving forward with that project and hopefully we're gonna finish it probably this. In next few months. The next, uh. ARPA is, is the emergency rent utility. We finished round one, round two. And right now we have nine thousand dollars left. We started round three. So far we got, you know, three applications received and I'm working with, um, consultant. Mr. Thomas and we're trying to process and I will get back to mayor and council if they need to allocate more money. It depends on the number of the application that we receive. So far we have spent forty two thousand five hundred. Seventy-six dollars out of that fifty thousand dollars. And the next project that we have in ARPA allocation is outdoor classes, which is, uh. As Mount Rainier Elementary School PTO is working on the outdoor classes. And also we have Tom Stone. And, uh, also that project is moving forward and we have received the second report for December and, uh, as you see. Uh, Thomas Stone is trying to, to get that project moving forward, but. Mount Rainier Elementary School, uh, has given us another report today, which I shared with the consultant this morning. So hopefully that project will be finished and completed soon. And also another project that we're working on, it's a Newton street that the council has, uh, allocated. Nine hundred eighty thousand dollars from the ARPA funding. And right now we are at the beginning stage of this project because we have some pipes. That I'm working with LID to, to investigate those pipes and get the status of those pipes and whether they're. Functioning properly before we start the project and work on the, on the topographic map that we're trying to develop. So that project is gonna be on the Newton street is a stretch between the Newton and, and thirty seventh street. And the last item in my report is the staff, staff, uh. Departures and the new hires. So, uh, thank God we recruited, uh, social services. She's gonna start on February, February thirteen. The public works labor has been recruited and, uh. He's going to start on February thirteen and I just, uh, I was talking to Almo today. We have the new coding inspector that is gonna start on twenty seven. So the only thing that is left, we have five police officers vacant, you know, positions. Unfortunately. We lost two. I've been talking to chief. So chief is working so hard to recruit. Uh, a good police officer for our team. Hopefully we get something very soon. That's all my report and I'll be glad if you have any question for me.
Okay, thank you. Um, war two. Jared, Valerie, Jimmy, Luke. If you're speaking, Jared, you're on mute. Thank you, Jared, for your comments. We cannot hear you. You want me to go into the next council member, then go back to you? We'll do that. So Valerie, go ahead.
Um, yeah, thank you. I think, um, this is good. I'm glad we're getting new staff on board. So that's good. Um. Um, a question for you, it's not in this report, but, um, and I think it was in December, we talked about, um, a survey going out to residents about the message. Um, um, and what, how do they prefer getting information? Is that, um, coming forward soon or what does that look like?
I have to get back to you on that. I'm sorry because, uh, if it's been in December or. Last year, it's almost, you know, and I need to talk to the staff and find out and I'll get back to you on that one.
Okay, um, thank you. That was my only main question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Valerie, Jared, you wanna see if it's working or still not?
Yeah, can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
No, just kidding.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. I'm sorry, guys. I've put a headset on precisely so I didn't have the microphone problem again. Um. Now, thank you for this, uh, Mr. Kamali. I, uh, you know, appreciate the updates, um, and, uh, you know, look to, uh. Obviously, you know, I'm really happy that, uh, you know, we have a social service coordinator on, on a code compliance. I know those are some two critical. Um, critical functions for the city and, uh. That we have, uh, someone permanent in both, uh, makes me very happy because I know that's, uh, it's area we needed support, uh, especially on the, so, the service area. So. Um, and then, yeah, no, look forward, um, you know, obviously we're down a number of officers, uh, and just look forward to getting those filled, uh, as soon as possible. Thanks.
Thank you.
Jimmy, Luke?
Uh. Yes, you can hear me. Um, thank you, Mr. Kamala, uh, uh, Mr. Kamali. You know, I, I think this is actually. Really impressive. I mean, a lot of us have seen these reports and work sessions. But we wanted to, uh, bring this out to the community because, you know, above under the mayor and yourself, uh, and the council, there's just an impressive amount of work. Uh, going on in the city and not of, uh, everybody, you know, is aware of all the developments and all the, uh, things going on. So, um, you know. It, it's, it's impressive all the things that are be, we're working on. Uh, I, I just, I'm not familiar with the library reimbursement, uh, maybe with having before, is this something? We spent money on and it would be reimbursed and what was it? I, I'm just not familiar with that.
Okay, uh, I can respond to that or. In two thousand eighteen, uh, the city, I believe, received, and mayor can correct me if I'm not correct. Uh, received, uh, fifty thousand dollars bond bill to renovate the library. So we spent more than fifty thousand dollars. At that time, unfortunately, the report was not filed on time. So when I became the city manager, it was the library and hundred thousand dollars for the pot salt. Which we went, uh, after those money to get the reimbursement and. Thank you to Bill, our new grant writer. So I, I gave him the task and I said, please go after this money. So we got the hundred thousand dollars. Back for the pot salt reimbursement. And now we are getting fifty thousand dollars back from the money that we spent on the library renovation in two thousand eighteen and nineteen.
So the extra money.
Thank you.
Was matching grants, Jimmy? And it was a bomb builder was, um, it was the forty-seven district to help us get it. So that's one of the asks that we had and they delivered. So they've been, uh, good at delivering, um, Malcolm, Julian, you know, Diane, right? So, um. It helped along with that to make sure we had the funding for that. If not, we will have to have closed the library because, um, it wasn't. And dear, dear need of repairing and our team definitely worked really hard fixing it. So that's the background of that one, but. And the change, a lot of things filled through. All right, cool. Uh, Luke?
Thank you, mayor. Um, just wanna echo Jimmy, uh, Mr. Kamali, this is just looks excellent. It's, it's a big portfolio. Um, I think these are more things, more projects that. Then we've had going on like big projects at any time since I've been here and they're all, um, on track. I know some are with risk. Um, and it's, I'm, I'm, I'm really excited to see us pointing out that there are risks and challenges, um, so that we can try to address them. Spring park. Um, you know, if that falls apart, we're gonna have rethink what we need to do there. Um, I, I do have three questions. One is, um. On the memorial park project, I would just, um, recommend that staff reach out to both Penny Royal. And, um, ERA Wine Bar again, just to update them on the timeline. You may have already done that, but. Um, I know they're nervous about how this is gonna affect their, um, business and I, we wanna make sure that we're accommodating them. As much as possible so that we have, you know, sort of limited effect on, on their business. That's one piece. Um, I would just highlight you to, to take back and, and do that. Um, the other piece on spring. Um, the other piece on Spring Park, I wonder if it would be helpful um if. Rosio may have this already, but just part of the history behind that spring, it's kind of an amazing history. Um, going back to the original Clemson House and that may make it attractive to a contractor to just know that like. We're gonna be doing this work on this really historical spring. Um, we're looking to get grant money from the state on it and it just. You know, maybe that interests them um to actually come and meet us uh for the visit. Um, so you could ask, you know, Jimmy may have some history there. I can do with that as well. So see if Rosio um wants to talk to us about that and we would be happy to provide that. Um, the third thing, um, the um, the facade improvements um on Rhode Island, and this is just for. Um, as we move on to Thirty-Fourth Street, um, I do think it would be good maybe if we could take a look. I know there was the talk about um using Neighborhood Design Center to do the Thirty-Fourth Street streets, streetscapes. But I think I I would, and this is Luke talking, so you don't have to run and do this, but. If there's some agreement with the mayor and council, I think it would be good to get bids from some other designers, um, even if they're more expensive. Um, I think it's really important that those facades are um are upgraded in a in a in a style uh that can. Uh, really be striking for folks. Um, and if that costs a little bit more money, um, I'm I'm okay with that. Um, so that would be my only comment there. Thank you.
Can I respond to your comments, please?
Go ahead.
I just, yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanna let you know that we're gonna have a meeting with. The Penny Royal uh and Arrow Wine Bar and there is. Insurance company over there on Perry Street, which I have reached out to them. So I'm working with LID right now. To have a meeting with them because we have to have them sign a paper for our permit to be sent to the D-Pod. So we're planning to have that meeting very soon and I will, you know, keep mayor and council posted.
Thank you.
All right. And then I will talk to Rosio regarding the Spring Park and get back to you. And uh, I will talk to also Mr. Hopkins regarding going, you know, through the bid process and get at least, you know, three. And see how we can move forward with the new, you know, with the new process and see.
Yeah, cuz I'd like some high-end designers um to to see how much it would cost to get some 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 good talent in there. Thanks.
We'll get that one, you know, taken care of.
Thank you. Um, the other thing, I just wanna make sure that um we are aware that. With um, we do design, we get a lot of community involvement and feedback. And that's why they're so loved. So that's something that helped us um. Avoid a lot of problems in the facade improvement. I was in a lot of meetings with them in the businesses. Um. So I would say don't put those bits out, but don't disqualify people that are very good with community. Because it's very important as well. Um, so they're gonna bring that high level of um of community outreach and involvement. Um. You know, whoever whoever it is, because I I'll tell you this, it's made a big difference in in this project. Of not just how fast and accurate it's moved, but how happy the business owners are. Okay, uh, Mr. Kamali, it's not in this report, but can you please make sure that in the next one, um. We are aware of what the new construction work um is coming for the streets. I know Perry Street South needs dire repair. Um, if you could put a proposal together, um, those holes look like um worse than a third world country at this point. You could have holes in those holes. All right, right, right next to City Hall. So um, if you could like start working um, one informing mayor and council what the new projects are for FY twenty-three. If any, but definitely um. Look into Perry because it's 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 really bad. Um, that whole entire section, especially around City Hall. Okay?
All right, uh, before you go, Mayor, I just wanna let you know that we have, we do have a proposal because I've been, yeah. You know, working with Rosio and Rosio has got the proposal for the Perry and the other which we're gonna present it. To mayor and council in the budget uh work session.
Um, are you talking FY twenty-four or FY twenty-three? Because I don't think.
FY twenty-four because we already, we don't have money in FY twenty-three, so I'm forecasting it for FY twenty-four. Which is gonna be close to two hundred thousand dollars that I'm asking mayor and council to include it in the street and sidewalk upgrade. We have item in the public.
Submit the proposal ahead, Mr. Kamali, because if there's any funny for this year, I would like to take care of it. Because I don't think this is gonna last until July. I mean, it's really bad.
I will send it to you guys tomorrow.
I have to keep strolling around, um, because I'm afraid my tires are gonna get stuck there and it's like that for most of the residents right there. So that um. Especially during the rain, we're trying to make sure that it does not become mosquito cesspool. So send it out and we'll see if there's any money uh from FY twenty-three and if you could put in the work session, um, if need be. So we could discuss it, um, but definitely send it out because um, um, unfortunately, when I send the photos, um, I, the files were too big, uh, they got returned. But um, it is pretty bad. I mean, you could feel like you're two foot in there and and still plenty of room in it. Okay?
I will share it with mayor and council tomorrow and we will have it for the next work session in February.
Okay, all right, council, moving on to the next item. Thank you, Melissa. Melissa, can you move the agenda down just a little bit? Um, where is public comment in this agenda? Okay, wow, okay, we're gonna have to move it a little bit up next time. Um, so that we could like address it. Um, okay. Presentation and discussion on Pepco Tree Trimming. The mayor and council will have a presentation from Mr. Cody. Um, oh. Hazel Time? And I apologize for butchering your last name. Uh, Peck of Vegetation Manager on Pepco Tree Treaming in the city and I did saw um. Mr. Cody um here, so I'm gonna see the floor. Um. I would definitely pre- preset the fact that we asked you to come is because we've gotten a lot of um. Complaints from residents about trees being butchered. And they wanna, um, they want us to like, you know, bring peckles to figure out what the process was for tree trimming. But also when it comes to the contractors that you hire. Um, what what is the check and balance when it comes to work that they do? Because we love our trees and we take a lot of care of our trees and. We understand they have to clear the power lines, but uh some of them have been chopped up so badly that they become even dangerous. But um, the the floor is yours.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, good. So yeah, my name's Cody Hazelton. I work for Pepco on the vegetation management department. Um, uh, Forestville overseeing um Prince George's County. So I'll kind of just give a brief overview of kind of what our program is. So. We're on a four-year schedule, so we we trimmed um last year's three circuits that that run into the city. Um, and we had trimmed those those same three um four years ago. So we're on a four-year schedule. So every four years. We we do preventive maintenance on, you know, every circuit across our system. And the way the process works, so um before the tree crew start, we have a a plan, a work planner that goes out. They work for Davy Tree. Um, the arborist goes out, they go and evaluate all the trees along. Along the circuits that are on our schedule for the year and they plan, you know, every tree that needs to be trimmed to meet. Clearance requirements and then they also look for. You know, hazardous limbs and then also, you know, hazardous dendine trees that we're gonna look to remove because we're worried about them falling. Into the wires and causing outages. Um, so that's kind of the process we do. Once we get a, you know, our plan like. For the city, once we get the plan together, we send it over the city, um, you know, give the city to review. And we went through and did a permit process for. All the trees we're planning on removing, um, got approval for those and then. You know, worked out a replanting program that we're gonna be doing this spring in the city to replace those trees that we did remove. So once that's done, then we started doing the actual work. So um, the contractor that we use to do the pruning is Aspen Tree Experts. So they're going through and they're they're pruning to um. The scope that's specified by the Maryland Public Service Commission. So they're pruning for a four years. Four, four years worth of clearance, everything that grew back from the last time we trimmed. Or we going through and you're re-pruning that growth back out to keep our wires clear. So there's not tree limbs either falling or growing into them. Um, and then that's, that's the process for that. Once all that work is done, I go through and and review everything to make sure it was all completed. And um, to scope and make sure nothing was missed. So that's kind of just a brief overview. I know. Um, talking to Rosio, there was gonna be a few questions in regards to, you know, some of the work done in the area. So I guess I'll open the floor to any questions anyone has for me.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, I see uh Jimmy who has raised his hand. So Jimmy, I'm gonna go uh to you and then I'm definitely gonna go to the Green Team Liaison as well. And tree commission, cuz I know a lot of complaints came through there as well. Uh, go ahead, Jimmy.
So um. Uh, maybe the green team, but uh I'm gonna ask Rosio to, so there seems to be a disconnect. Uh, I mean, what what Mr. Hazelton has told us is that they send the city a plan and a view and. But then we kind of hear that uh contractor's gone wild, you know, so uh. Uh, question is, are we monitoring what they send us? Uh, is it something where we know or the oversight seems to be somewhat uh less than desirable? So I don't know where. I mean, from what Mr. Hazelton said, I think it's Hazelton, get it? Uh, said is that, you know, we know everything that's going on, so I I don't get that. So maybe. Rosio, what's your thoughts about it? Because there's, you know, we got lots and lots of complaints about, you know, trees being slaughtered, so. You know, is the city involved or not? Should we be? And is, you know, where is the failure in this one? Thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Okay, so I thought I saw Rosio here. Um.
I I saw her there.
Yes, she's here. Rosio, Rosio, go ahead. The floor is yours.
No problem. Thank you. Good evening, mayor, council, city manager and everyone else. Thank you, Cody, for being on tonight. Um, to answer your question, Jimmy, um, yes. Pepco, since I started working with the city in two thousand eighteen, there were issues before then that started where um. There was not much communication being of. Involved through Pepco with the city. So when I came in in two thousand eighteen, I think they started. Working um with the city, um, being more involved, involving the tree commission, involving the city as. Going through their plans. So they submit their plans to us in advance, um, their vegetation maintenance plan. They did submit that to us again this time around in advance, which that information was shared with the tree commission. Um, we evaluated all their plans, even the trees that were going to be removed. Um, we had a consulting arborist assess those trees that were designated to be removed. If there were any concerns, we um also did walkthroughs of all the trees um. With the plans there. Um, so the true uh Pepco has been um communicating with the city and all this information will has also been distributed out to the. Residents. Um, I have shared all the information with. I worked very closely with Pink, um, who have shared all the information. She's blasted all the information um to the public there as well. Even I've had Cody and his team let us know exactly. What streets are gonna be on on daily basis. So when they were out in the city working, they did communicate that to us as well. Um, so even that communication was shared out with the community the day of, the morning of. So communication has been well, the oversight, they, as Cody mentioned, I mean. Pepco has, they are measures. Um. The city allows Pepco to prune trees. Um, of course, no more than twenty-five percent, which is allowed through our ordinance. Um. But Pepco's subcontractors are to supposed to comply with Maryland Tree Expert laws. Um, so whoever plans to do the pruning, they do need to be licensed in the state of Maryland. Pepco does need to be around and supervise the crews, make sure that the crews are being licensed. Um, and I know that Cody does a very good job at that.
Okay, Jimmy did.
So just last things. Just you heard some of the complaints that came up the community, so just how do you respond to them? Maybe, or maybe the tree committee. I I'll hold off and let the tree commission talk.
Let let me, let me go to Luke. Uh, next. Luke, go ahead. The floor is yours and um, and you could present who's here from the tree commission. Um, if any to talk about this as well. Go ahead.
No, I'm I've I I sort of, I thought Jimmy was on the the right line of questioning there. I know Judy's on from the tree commission. I see her here as well. Um, so I'm not sure if uh mayor, you'd like to go to the tree commission after. Um, you know, we speak as as a body, um, defer to you there. Um, but I think Jimmy was hitting on the right line of questioning there.
So let me get through it and I'll get the tree commission. But I think that there there is, there is, the communication has been good. When the city's sending it, they send it to all of us and we put it out cuz then I put it out. So that's good, but I think it's like. The residents were highly upset when it comes to like the.
The amount of pruning?
The the amount of pruning has been done and they feel like the trees are being damaged as well. So that's, that's the overall summary, but I'll get Judy to go on it after. So I'm gonna have Valerie and Jared. Go ahead, Valerie.
Yeah, thank you. I think, I mean, yes, I think um a lot of times the communication is out there, but it's not necessarily the day of or people don't. Remember that it's coming or and so people wake up and they see trees being cut and, you know, it's it's a little bit scary and it's a little bit frustrating that it's hard to get that information out to people. And for people to receive the information. Um, so I would like, um, you know, Public Works to continue uh putting out that information. Um, and finding new ways to communicate the information to everyone as much as possible. Um, so but um, I think that's. That's my uh comment. I think it's just really important that we continue to really communicate with people about what's happening and then, um, you know, if we can make sure, you know, uh. Cody, if you make sure that there's Pepco people out there watching the pruning happening so that there's no problems. Going forward, cuz the more we cut our trees, the less, you know, the less beautiful they are and it makes it harder for um for birds and bees and all that, so. Thank you.
Okay, Jared, you're next.
Yeah, no, I think um, I'll be communication. I appreciate all the work everyone's doing and getting that out. Um. And I think I'll probably defer to the tree commission on just their feedback here. It does, it does sound a little bit. I mean, we have this dynamic often with. When work is subcontracted out that the the goals and policies are um, you know, to follow certain. Rules and regs, um, but that doesn't necessarily always happen with subcontractors. Um, I'm not speaking directly about Pepco, but has happened with other um. You know, other major utilities and folks, so um. You know, I'd probably defer to the tree commission. I'd like to kind of hear their feedback on what's uh what's happening um or their observations. Thanks.
All right, perfect. Uh, before I go to the tree commission, I do have a suggestion, Rosio. Um. I don't know of Cody, whichever, but I mean, I can only only I can only a- address it to our, to to our staff. But I think that it'll be also important to take pictures um after the treatment happens for our records. Right? So if anything else is damaged by a car truck or lining, whatever it is, right? We have a photo in our records of what, how it got left after. So that will, when the residents say like, this is it, there's a photo of of what we're looking at to make sure that when they left that this is how I got left. Okay, so that might, that might help Pepco. Best advice for you, Pepco. But also like, you know, for us to have internally so that we could determine like. Everything uh followed through uh uh stated and and here is like, you know, this document. So when the residents reach out to us. You know, we go to you guys like we're we're aware of like, this is how I got left and it and everything was. Based on standard, they had an extra permit because like the tree was damaged or hurt, whatever it is. That we also link it to that. But Judy, I'm gonna see the floor to you as part of the tree commission. Go ahead.
Well, I have not been formally appointed. It was my, tonight was gonna be. Um, my appointment, but I already have been working with the tree commission and I've been coming. Uh, familiar with the work and I've been studying the uh, the um. Um, urban forest uh code. And yes, the I, one of my worries and my preoccupations as as a citizen. Um, and I wanted to join the 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 forest, uh, I mean, the uh tree commission was. Because I want more um community involvement, more education and more um. Um. Um, understanding of what the canopy is in 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 um. In Mount Rainier. And we really uh love our trees, like, like you said, uh, mayor. And um, and it's very sad and it's actually, it it breaks our heart to see these beautiful trees. And, um, and it's very sad and it's actually, uh, i- it breaks our heart to see these beautiful trees. Being cut in a, in a very ugly manner, I mean, it's just, I wish that we could. Be more present when those decisions are made. And then, and, and be there with the contractors, maybe, you know, knowing when those, those. Those trimmings are gonna be taking place and maybe help direct, because there are some experts in our Tree Commission. Uh, they know a lot about the trees and, and how to trim, and what makes a, a tree viable. Because some of, of, of the trimmings have actually killed the trees and make them very weak and, um. And it's very hard to, to recover those trees, they're big and, and, and beautiful and. I think, uh, we really need to do something about working together and with experts, I don't know. I've seen a lot of, of, of contractors that, doing things, I saw them in Washington near, or near. Mount Rainier doing also, uh, same contractors, I think. Doing a very poor job and is, 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 I don't know how. Their expertise is, is confirmed, or whether it is checked. And once they, it's done, it's done, it's, there's nothing we can do.
Thank you so much, Judy, you see, we're so happy that, uh, you're gonna be joining the team that we already dubbed you, right, right before we saw you. So we appreciate you being here, um, as well as your comments. So, uh, Rosio, can you do me a favor, can you walk through what the process is, so that we could better understand? And, um, you know, uh, the other thing is like, we do have a comment at the chat and I read it to you, so that was part of what it is, it says, um. This is from Nina Young, it says, "The day that the cutting occurred, the residents were not informed about the trees that will be cut on their property." Also, there was no supervisor on site when the trees were cut during the most recent event." So one, um, a- address, how do you call it, um, are, part of your answer is like. If they're not, I read, are the, the people that live in front of those trees notified by, like, leaving a paper in their home, so they're aware this is happening? And if not, definitely be good something to adopt as well, so they're aware this is coming. Uh, because they're the ones that are most directly affected, um, I think the big luck, uh, so, but go ahead, I received what the process is and, um. And how do you call it, how do we move forward to make sure that, um, the, the people that own the homes, um, in front of those trees are notified?
Yes, Mayor, so I can let Cody give more of that input on how they do their communication, cuz they do. The residents that are gonna be affected by the Pepco work do receive notices. To my knowledge, so I can let him speak a little bit on that, um, and then I, I can explain what the process is. I mean, I think Cody explained a little bit of what they have to do on their end, once those plans, um, like I said, are completed, they are shared with the city. We review the plans along with the Tree Commission, um. We review the tree removals in advance of the latest work that's gonna be done. They, we identify the removals, visit them in person, the, we work along, except, like I said, with the, uh, Tree Commission, we discuss even. This walkthrough is even done with Cody, Cody usually comes along during those walkthroughs. So, we will all work along with it together, the personnel, we discuss, um, where, whether any of removals are warranted or any pruning. Um, the, we wait, that is waited, um, for the city. Um, they wait for us to get independent assessments, if we need to do any assessments for any of the removals from the consulting arborists. The city doesn't completely, the, well, the Tree Commission doesn't really completely review the pruning plans, since that extends across the whole city. And that usually doesn't involve pruning more than twenty-five percent of the tree. Which is allowed according to the Urban Forest, um, code.
Okay, Cody, uh, the question to you is like, how are the homeowners, um, in front of the streets alerted of, um. Of the trees being cut down in, uh, are immediately at close to their property?
Okay, yeah, so we, we do two forms of notification, so when the, um, the work planner's going through, the arborist's walking through. Um, everywhere that we're doing work, they're leaving a, they're going up to the door, knocking on the door, and then leaving, if you know, known answers. They leave a, a door hanger on their door informing them of the upcoming work on their property. So if it's an actual, you know, true, they're planning to remove on their property, and we get permission for this, we'll get signed. Sign permission from that property owner, you know, gi- allow us to remove the tree, and then if it meets the requirements. Needing a permit to the city, you know, we work through that, um, aspect of it, if it's just tree pruning. There's just a, you know, a notification left that has a contact number for. You know, for the arborist that left it to call them back if they have any questions, and then, you know, they'll come out and meet them, and we'll be pruning. Uh, once the plans are all completed, uh, we then send a letter out to everyone on the circuit. Whether there's work on their property or not, inform them that we'll be in the area doing work. Um, and there's also a contact number for them to call us if they have any questions in regards to any work at their house. So we do, we do two, two forms of notification to, to all residents that are gonna have work done, or, you know, just be in the vicinity of work is happening, if there's nothing even on their property.
Okay, um, Cody, I think that in the past, um, I know when WSC leaves letters, they send the letter to us. As the city for us to publish it, so that way, if for whatever reason the resident hasn't, has not seen it. At least we're able to share it online to say like, hey, you must have, you, you should have received the letter, and this is what is, um. What, where the area they're gonna be on, and so at least that, that helps on the communication, um, internally for us, Rosio. In Mali, like, we need to do a communications plan, and that includes when the Tree Commission, Rosio, and Pepco goes over. To see these items, like, take photos and publish them to let people know, to alert them that this is coming. Um, and not just for the letter, so, um, Cody, so, uh, will you be able to provide the letter that you guys send out, um. To the residents, so we could publish it, so we could help you spread the word? You're muted.
Yeah, I was, I was on mute, sorry about that, yeah, I can, I can next time forward, for the letter that we send out. And then also the, the door hanging notification that we leave.
And yeah, please, so that we could help, like, outreach, cuz, you know, sometimes people, when it's cold, when it's raining, they might not see it. So we at least alert people, not just the ones in that block, but the community, like, you know. We do put a notice out, but that would let them know, like, okay, notice I've been sent out, and this is what the notice look like, that's what, that, that's what has helped some. With WSC, in order for us to like, restate that those notices were there, if not, this is what they look like, right? Um, and, and to, like, on our end, how do you call it, uh, do, um. When the walkthroughs happen, if we could go ahead and send communications along, so they could take photos, uh, Tree Commission, City, and Pepco, right? So, uh, people are alerted that this is what, uh, this is what is coming, I think visually people have to see it as well, okay? Uh, Council, anything else to, to add, um, future Tree Commissioner, anything? Give me thumbs up if we're good, or if you need me to open up the floor once again, uh, raise your hand. Jimmy, I don't see you, you're, um, Luke, we're good?
I see Judy as her hand raised.
Okay, so let me go through the council around, and then I'll go back. So Jimmy, you're good?
No, I mean, I just, is it a person or complaint, cuz we actually got complaints that people were not notified. So, uh, you know, and, uh, wasn't just one person, so, so, is there like somehow quality control, we should contact? That happens, cuz I don't want quite leave you off the hook by saying everyone was notified when our residents were told they weren't notified. So, th- there's a, there's something, a missing thing there, and, uh, I don't know if you can check on that, or figure out how to stun. Because, uh, man, I don't, people in that neighborhood complained that did not get door hangers, otherwise. You know, they would have, you know, you know, they would have known that, so I, I just, I, you know. I mean, that's what we heard, and I, I, I wanna think, people wouldn't make that up, so. Anyway, I know what the quality control, who we can call to see if that is done, but a lot of people in our community said they were not notified.
Yeah, you can, uh, if you can send me address or addresses, I can search it up, we timestamp every time you leave a door hanger. There's a timestamp for that, um, so I can look at that for, you know, each address, and then I can also give you the date that the, um. Letter was mailed out.
That'd be very helpful.
So, we have a comment on the chat before I go to you, Judy says, "The problem is that the two forms of notification happened more than six months ago in twenty twenty-two." That should not be sufficient coverage, the notification should be like WSC, which is within thirty days. Also, while the Tree Commission doesn't looks at trimming greater than, uh, twenty-five percent, the amount of trimming is likely up to or exceed that threshold. Okay, um, so if what we need to adjust in our end, uh, Rosio is that, like, just give the whole list, whether it's twenty-five or no, so they could decide to go look at it. Uh, that's something that the Tree Commission will have to take upon them, if they wanna see anything that's lower than twenty-five as well, okay?
I'm sorry, can I say something?
Go, go ahead.
Just to take you back on everything, so. Um, I do wanna say also, it's important for, even to directly, we directly communicate with Pepco, Cody. Immediately, and Cody's always been great with responding back, um, very quickly, so if there's any, um, nuisances, um, that happen. At the moment, we definitely, please, contact us, send us pictures, any information, addresses. Um, we'll do our best to defer any communication back, and we'll also share that information with Cody, and I'm sure that he will be in touch. And we'll address the situation quicker, so it's important that people contact us directly if there's any issues. Um, or any concerns, that way we can best address it with the contractors ourselves, and because we're not out there a hundred percent of the time. So, the better that effectively that the communicate, the, the community communicates with us, then it's easier for us to address the problems.
So, Rosio, I would say the problem with addressing the problem after is the tree has already been cut. And there's nothing that could be done, I think what we're trying to do is put preventions ahead of time when it comes to communication and outreach. So, if the list that's under twenty-five is sent to the Tree Commission, um, they could figure out, like, if they could rotate, look at it and stuff like that. So that way, at least it's in their radar, and maybe even publish that, like, this are like, less than twenty-five, so be aware this is coming. So if it becomes that, at least it's in their radar as, as well. So Judy, I'm gonna give you the, the floor, go ahead.
No, basically, what my question is, you know, what is from our end and, and the city? Are, are you notifying the, the, uh, once you're, you know what the work of Pepco is gonna be? Do you notify the Tree Commission, so they, because one of us could be available to go. And be, and accompany the work and make sure that everything's well, is done well.
Rosio?
Yes, so the Tree Commission is aware of the work and also the community, like I mentioned, the. Um, Pepco, the contractors, they send out daily notifications of when they're gonna be out in the city. Um, when they're out there working, so we do submit that information to our Communications Department, which they help us in blasting out at that information as well.
But do they go di- directly to the members of the Tree Commission?
Yes, we, those are also put in the emails. Cuz we received those email notifications from the contractors, so that's shared via email, and then. Like I said, that's shared with Communications at the same time, which then they ass- assist us with distributing. That information through social media platforms.
So, um, thank you, Rosio, so time is up, Council. Give me thumbs up or thumbs down if you need to add another comment to add more time, or you're moving from this, from this item. Where are you guys with it? You guys need two more minutes?
I, I just need one quick thing, I, I would just.
Can you do me a favor, because Melissa's blasting my phone?
I'd like to add two minutes.
Yeah, can you add two minutes to it, cuz it, we've been over two minutes ago, but can you add two minutes officially? Is there, um, Jimmy made the motion any second? So, discussion, objection, abstention, none, two minutes, go ahead Luke.
Um, if we could just get a commitment from Pepco, and so here's my recommendation on the way forward. Um, so if currently the city is CCing the Tree Commission email address, so this is. Judy, probably before your time, there's a Tree Commission email address that would go to every Tree Commissioner. So, my recommendation for moving forward would be that, when work is about to happen, the Tree Commission email address is CC to let it. Is part of the communication to let people know, and then the Tree Commission can, um, uh. You know, to the extent they have time, to the extent folks have capacity, can then meet Pepco there at those locations, so. My question to Pepco would just be, make sure you get Rosio, um, the exact time and day of when you'll be. Um, pruning on which streets, so that the Tree Commission has the opportunity to set somebody, uh, out, um, as much ahead of time as possible. That way we can sort of, um, cover that base, um, and then, um, I think the second piece is just to Jimmy's point, just having a point of contact. Um, for, uh, if somebody believes that they were not notified, thanks.
Um, Cody? Can we get that?
Yeah, I, I think what you were asking, I believe we're already doing, I mean, we were, we were sending every, every day we were gonna be in the city. You know, that morning, we would send the, uh, the street locations we were gonna be pruning on. So we, we would send every, every street we were gonna be working on that day, we'd send, send that in daily. So I believe, I believe we're already covering that aspect of, unless, unless I misunderstood.
Okay, so, um, Rosio and team, if that's being done daily, send it to us as well, so that way we are the best communicators out here as well. So we are aware, especially when complaints are coming in, and to, um, work on communications plans, so that we will alert people as much as we. We can, aside from the stuff that we're doing, okay?
Okay, so, thank you.
I for see you, and thank you Cody for, uh, joining us today. Okay, so, um, we're gonna be moving on to, I know, Melissa's like, two minutes are up. Um, Mel- Melissa, uh, is, uh, qui- quietly, since we, since we noticed this. Of like, how far we're going, okay, so, moving on to the next, um, item, item number two presentation by Sir Committee, the Mayor and Council received a presentation from Melissa. Um, Barriere President of the Sir Committee. Melissa, um, it's a pleasure to have you here with us, thank you for the great work you've been doing at, um. Along with Jimmy and the whole Sir Committee to, um, to revive the Sir Committee and get them very active. So, the floor is yours, Melissa.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I also have, uh, here with me tonight Karen Schoyer, who was our Community Relations and Outreach Officer. And we're just gonna give a brief presentation on our goals and vision for this calendar year. Um, and as the mayor said, it is a newly revised committee. So last July, I was appointed as president, and in November, I was officially elected to a one-year term. Um, we currently have seven members. Um, six, what we're gonna call lead responders and one support responder. We spent a lot of the fall updating our bylaws, and we changed some of that language to be more welcoming. And include people who may want to attend monthly meetings, or volunteer at events, but are intimidated by the requirement. Um, of having to have the full twenty-hour basic cert training. Um, so we've got lead responders who have had the complete training, which is the twenty-hour basic training plus CPR and first aid and AED. And then we have support responders, which, um, are the people that, um, that I mentioned. Who wanna be involved but are not yet ready to commit to the full training. Um, and all that means is that in the course of a disaster in our city, or some. Thing where we have to be, um, called cert into action, that only lead responders will be a part of that. That was, you know, the people that have the training. Um, this year we have two main goals. We are going to offer free training and engagement opportunities to the community. We plan to have a minimum of four trainings for the community this year, and to be present at a minimum of four community events. We've already had our first training, it was active shooter training on January seventh. Um, and that was taught by Lieutenant Sims of our own Mount Rainier Police Department. Um, we had a good turnout of twenty-two people. And I was very pleased with the diversity, not just the racial diversity, but also we had a nice mix. Of cert members from Chevrolet and Upper Marlboro, as well as citizens from Mount Rainier. We, um, will be offering our second training later this month on February twenty-seventh. And it's going to be on the use of Narcan. And we plan to offer two more trainings. Um, one is going to be the CPR and first aid offered right here in our community, and the other one will be educating people. Um, on how to evacuate from their home, and along with that, we hope to include education on. Um, the citywide evacuation plan. We also recently looked over the emergency operations plan. Um, we also recently looked over the emergency operations plan. That the city has and it has helped cert to focus on what we as a team need to be trained on. And two areas that we will be getting trained on, um, this coming year is traffic control. And the other one is setting up a tent, um, in an emergency situation. Which could be, um, a number of different. Um, scenarios. It could be a tent for triage. It could be, um, a water station or comfort station. And so we'll be looking at these different scenarios and the supplies that we need. Um, for each of those events. Um, and then our second goal is. To collaborate with, um, other organizations within the city. Uh, police department and city hall and fire department, so. They all know what cert is and how cert can be of vital help. Um, in addition, we're collaborating with other area certs. Um, at the active shooter training, we are able to meet up with some people from Chevrolet and also Upper Marlboro. And, and it's really great to be connected with them. So we don't have to reinvent the wheel and figure everything out for ourselves. Um, and in fact, that's how we learned that Anarundel County Cert has traffic school. Where we can learn to get our, um, our training from them. And so now I'm going to turn it over to Karen.
Thanks, Melissa. Good evening, everyone, and thanks for welcoming us to the city council meeting. Um, I think Melissa did a great job kind of recapping where we are with cert today. Uh, we do have a couple of asks of city council and I'm gonna put them in the chat, but basically two questions. Um, based on your experience, I don't know if you have had experience with cert, um, in its previous iterations. Or familiarity with cert, how you think the cert team could be most effective in supporting the city? And then the second question is how can we increase our membership? Um, we, we currently don't represent the demographics of the city. Um, it's a small group of us, but we'd like to grow and we'd like to. Be representative of our city. So any ideas, suggestions, or ways that you could assist us in growing our membership? As Melissa mentioned, there's. A few different ways to engage. One is to be a lead responder, which does require quite a bit of training. To be a support responder, which is involvement, but not that, that heavy load of training, or maybe over time. People can eventually get the additional training. And then to just attend some of our free training opportunities. So there's. Several different ways and different kind of intensity levels of engagement, I would say. So any suggestions you have around those two questions? About how we can be most effective and then also how we can recruit more members? We'd welcome your suggestions.
Thank you so much, Karen. So I'm gonna go with, starting with the liaison. Jimmy? Go ahead, the first yours?
Well, uh, most of my comments I tell them in the meeting. Uh, but I, I think trying to figure out like a minimal. Aspect, whether it's a, uh, you know, a tel- a, a, a street telephone network or. A captain, a cert captain on a street, we, all you do is have numbers or, or just somebody who could be willing to volunteer for. Kind of almost a, a lesser trained thing, you know, where the people could at least take a step, you know? Being an organizer, my, my year is, it's like, you know, having people take a little step where they, you know, will you be willing to? Be a captain or your street, you know, in case of a, a emergency where, where they collect names or. Willing to help out, you know, is this an emergency to do, you know, something like that? So I, I think, you know, the, all the trainings are somewhat intimidating. And trying to find out something that, you know, I mean, cause a lot of our people. Want to help in their community. They love our community and. You know, then not everyone can be a city councilman or councilperson or. You know, or so it's like important, you know, I think people wanna help out to try and figure out what is the sweet spot? Where you can get people to help out without getting them. You know, people busy, children, you know, this and that, you know, where they can get involved. In the beginning and then you can increase the workload. But you guys are doing great, you know, I'm, I'm really impressed. You know, Melissa and the whole crew is like, uh, you know, really awesome. It's like, you know, the best committee I've worked with. No disrespect to all the other committees, but it's, you guys are doing a good job. Thank you.
You're gonna start a whole uprising, Jimmy. When the other committee is here, you said this. They'll be like, at eighty-one, Jimmy, no. Took us dead. Uh, all right. Thank you so much, Jimmy, and thank you Karen also for the question. So I'm gonna go over to, um, Valerie. Uh, Luke and Jared, go ahead.
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, thank you for the presentation and all the work that you're doing. Um. I think some ideas on engagement, um, there are two local schools in our community that have. PTO meetings and, um, events around, you know, events that they do, like movie nights and things like that where you have. A lot of parents and a lot of people. Um, there's also, um, I think the, the police department has a. The, the, uh, youth training program, um, that you might be able to look at, um, connecting with at some point. Um, and I think the community events that you are participating in, um, I think those are really well done and I think. People really enjoy them. So just, I think being at those events and having a lot of good people. Participating in that, I think is, is really key. So. Um, I'd also suggest, um, having things in Spanish, um, and translated, um, so that. Having people that speak Spanish at certain events like the Easter egg hunt and, you know, all the other things that they, they do. Um, I think those are important. So. Thank you for your work. Those are some of my thoughts. I can keep thinking about more ideas, but I think that's, those are some ways to, to broaden your reach and, and get the message out there. And thank you.
So if you come up with any more, email them. They're pretty good at responding back. So Melissa and the team is definitely on point on that. And so, uh, we said, who, Jared? Luke, or Luke, Jared?
Luke, Jared, yeah, I'll jump on. It's so, um, well, first off, the green team and the arts commission and the, and, and the tree commission, pretty good city committees do a lot of great work. So I push back a little bit against Jimmy, but you guys are doing great work. The first thing I'll say is. The fact that you got twenty-plus people to a city event is like. You should be really proud of that. I'm not joking there. I mean, Selena and I used to have Ward One. Meetings back when she was a wee old councilperson. And we would get like five people and we would think that was a victory. So I mean, getting twenty-plus people is just a really big deal and really great, and I think you're doing great work. Um, as far as being the most effective, um, I would caution you as being overly ambitious. Um, the projects that have worked the best for me where I've taken leadership, so the food forest, the arts commission, things like that. It's where I set up a project plan that is very conservative and thinks about the calendar. You, you spend a lot of time upfront thinking about the calendar. I'd be like, okay, what can we do in spring? And, and give yourself time for mistakes to happen or things to happen. And, and don't overpack the calendar. You know, I like to think of it in seasons, fall, summer, spring, winter. If you do one thing every season, that's a lot. That's gonna take up a lot of your time as a volunteer. Maybe you can only do two big things a year. Um, and it's okay if those things are the same thing year after year. Um, pre-COVID, the green team had a really good thing going with the springing, the spring greening fair, like every year, every year, every year. Um, so things like that, um, are important. So I would just think about like project planning and really be thoughtful in how you do project planning. Um, that's at least where I've seen projects be successful, and that's just speaking from my, my experience. Um, how we can help recruit members, it's been really hard, um, recruiting people. Um, in a manner that is more reflective of our actual demographics and that's because the people who tend to turn out from those things are single-family homeowners. And that demographic is a little bit different than the demographic of the city as a whole. And there are lots of reasons and we could have a really long conversation on why that is. Selena, our mayor, has been really successful at outreach to department buildings through her partnership with Casa de Maryland. So. Casa is definitely an organization that I think you guys should use and, and Mayor Benitez can make introductions for you there. Um, also, um, ex-mayor Miles, Melinda, you know, it may be worthwhile talking to her. Um, she may have people you can talk to as well. Um, and just use the city's channels. Um, you know, our communication team is doing the best that, you know, we, they've ever been. Doing in the past, um, and so they can really get messages out there and help there. Um, so that would be my suggestion and I think Valerie's suggestions of using the PTO is a really good one. Um, and, uh, but just appreciate what you guys are doing. Um, really, really, you should be really proud of the work you've done thus far and, and, and. Yeah, that's it. I'll stop talking.
To be fair, we've had more than five people, but there were days in the cold weather and rain that. We were happy to see one soul without standing in that corner. Um, all right, uh, we're gonna go, Jared, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, again, thank you for, um, coming on the council meeting night and, uh, waiting to, waiting to speak or. Really appreciate it. Really appreciate the time you're putting into, um, being here and helping. Uh, support the safety and, uh, critical needs of our community. So I just wanna say it's really, really much appreciated. Um. You know, I think Valerie, Luke, Jimmy and Selena have all hit on, hit on points already. Um, I, I think to Luke's point, I just wanted to. Highlight the, you know, the challenge with. You know, sort of lining up participation with the broader city. It's a, it's a, again, it's a much bigger one. Um, it's a goal we should work towards, but you know, just, just know that that's, uh, it's. Sometimes been a challenge across the board and we can all, um, not reflective of your committee. Or the work you're doing on something we can continue to, uh, to build on. Um. You know, and opportunities at, at public events, uh, particularly the big ones which tend to draw, you know, like. Members mentioning Easter egg hunt or the holiday events, which tend to draw a very broad. Slice of the city, um, often may be a really good time to engage. So. Um, yeah, thank you so much for coming out, uh, for the work you're doing and for the work you continue to do and the commitment that you've shown to our city. It's really appreciated.
Thank you, and we already have our first recruit, see, from Judy. I would like to participate in some capacity with the Sir Committee. Please share my, your. Share my information and I can help with Spanish translation. See, already a success. Thank, thank, thank you, Judy, first recruit. Um, I, I would say I think the most, most of the team already gave you, uh, good ideas. I think you guys have also done a good job of putting like messages in the messenger, continue doing that. Um, I was the highest bill city council yesterday. They do have a cert team. Um, and I know that we're doing some training and they wanna connect with other cities. Um, their city manager, um, um, I'll give you the information so that way you guys could connect, cause they were. And they did some training. Um, Narcan, different things like that, because obviously we're only as strong as the city as like all of our neighbors are working together, cause in case of an emergency, you know. The cert network gets, gets activated and you guys are, are, are informed of it, right? But I think that'd be a good way, uh, to get connected. Um, our officers, you know, have MOUs with each other. So that way they support you, but I think that would like. You guys go to support each other as well in the trainings and motivate you guys on it. Um. The other thing I would say, um. I do quite a few Facebook lives, so coordinate with you guys so that way you guys could pop in a Facebook live and we could do it bilingual. To let the people know what the cert team is and if they wanna get involved. Um, and try to, to go ahead and bring audience that way, um, through it. Um, I did have, um, delegate Fennell. Is gonna be doing a food distribution, um, at the end of, um. At the middle end of April, so I'm trying to like get the day, it might be April fifteen or April twenty-second. So I'll send you guys a day ahead of time so that way you're also able to involve and. We do have a social service coordinator, so it'd be good, um, for us, for you to meet. She is bilingual. She speaks Spanish. So that way, um, you guys could communicate, uh, together and figure out what projects you guys could work on or how can you guys best support each other. Okay? So those are some of my suggestions and, um. You know, you guys are doing phenomenal. You guys took, took on this role, um. And you guys are doing outstanding and, you know, we all have teams that we love very much. The scholarship committee is way out there too. Um, but overall, we're very fortunate as a city to have volunteers that, um. They give it all for the city, you know, so I, I commend you guys for doing that and for our reaching and for being here. Um, it's very appreciated, okay? So if anything else come out, so we'll schedule the Facebook live and we'll get on it and then we'll share it through all of our social media networks and, um. The city channels as well. All right? So Melissa, you know where to find me usually. Okay, all right, perfect. All right, um. Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you for being here. Yeah, like thank you for, for being here and don't leave because you're a number seven as well. All right, perfect. Um, oh, this is Jimmy. Okay, presentation of the city's emergency plan. The Mayor and Council receive a presentation from Councilmember Jimmy Tarlo on the city's emergency plan. All right, Jimmy, the floor is yours.
Hopefully this won't take ten minutes. Uh. Maybe, people may not know, the city actually has an emergency plan about what to do in case of a. Emergency, uh, you know, biochemical or something happens in DC. Uh, this was last worked on when I, I was on council in two thousand and nine. Uh, the cert committee actually saw a copy of it and realized that the. The phone numbers and emails and, you know, things weren't really, uh, up to date. Uh, also, uh, we amended it to try and, uh, put some involvement, the cert committee, that they be involved in some way to help with emergency assistance. Uh, this does not actually have to be approved by the council, uh, according to the code. Uh, I don't know if anybody can send me, uh. If I can share my, doesn't matter that much, share the screen. Uh, can I share a screen?
Uh, yeah, you could. Melissa key given share capability and it's also on the screen right now, Jimmy, but it'll be, if you want to share.
The code isn't on the screen. That's what I was just trying to.
You, um, Melissa, you gave him, um, uh, share capabilities?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Melissa.
Uh. Oh, it doesn't really matter, but anyway, I'll just read what the code, the code basically says that the city plan, emergency operation plan. Uh, was approved February two thousand and nine as amended or the latest edition and vi- and revision. So this is basically the latest revision two thousand and twenty-three. Uh. You may wanna look at it. It has a lot of details about who's in, in place. What happens if the mayor and the city council there, who's in charge? And I don't wanna go over the details to the plan. I, I recommend people look at it. Uh, and we went over it with both the city manager. The chief and the communication person to make sure there's continued this communication. The last time I remember that the emergency plan went into action was when there was a snow emergency. And the whole city was, uh, uh, you know, nothing could happen and, uh, the city manager at that time. Janelle Wallace took office in city hall and had all sorts of people administering who would be in charge next. So it's one of these things that people don't know about, but it's an important thing that we have in place. Uh, one of the things I think the, uh, the cert committee was talked about was trying to do some publicity. Publicity about, for example, there's an evacuation plan. Believe it or not, that if you live on the northern part of the city, you're supposed to go up Queens Chapel Road. If you live in another part of the city, you're supposed to go down. Route one, another part of the city is supposed to go down, you know, you know, eastern, you know, different things. So. One of the things the cert committee was talking about was actually trying to. Give, maybe do a handout so kind of, so residents know, you know, what will happen in an emergency, you know, cause we are in a DC area. And, you know, DC is, you know. A target for possible, uh, catastrophic, catastrophic events, I would say. And so. That's all, uh, I asked, I suggested people in council, they have time, look over it. Uh, it has been, uh, looked at and amended and, and revised and updated. It doesn't have to be approved by the council, but people may wanna look at it. If there's some content issues, we can actually deal with it in the council. But most of the changes were just kind of, kind of updating. You know, the, the emergency plan has the cell phone numbers of everybody. And, uh, you know, who, you know, names the people and that has to be continually updated. That's my report on that. If any questions, please let me know.
Thank you so much, Jimmy. I did took a look of it. Um, if you could send me a Word document of it so I could do a track change. Cause there's various, um, things that, um, need to be still edited. Um, so could clean it up and also, uh, if we, uh, could get a clean map of those, of the route, cause that one's a little bit murky, but I, I'm pretty sure the city has a map. Uh, Public Works.
That's for sure.
Have like, they have nicer maps. I know, cause they created one map for me. But, um, but there's, uh, various sections that I wanna make, make sure that, uh, they're a little cleaned up. Um, some of them need a little bit of work. And the other thing is like a hundred, this thing should be reviewed, um. Continuously, especially after the elections, uh, because certain information is also changed. But also anytime a staff departs, um, it needs to be updated as well, cause it has all of our information. If not, uh. I also noticed that there's, um, neighboring police departments that were not in the list. But I could give you all of that, uh, cause I was reading through it and unfortunately. My, my word slash Excel slash emails had a, a little bit of a hiccup. So a lot of the work had to be closed down and as, uh, there was fear shed at city hall today as, as I was closing the windows. Um, okay, so if you.
I would just, I would just.
It will help.
I would just add the city clerk, if possible, could maybe be in. I would just add the city clerk, if possible, could maybe be in charge of just any kind of technical issues, like making sure that she has the most updated, listed to city clerk, clerk being in charge of updating. If there's anything in content, you know, that's something else, but like any technical issues, I think the city clerk maybe should be responsible for keeping it updated.
That works. I'm going to open up the floor to the council, but if you could send to me via either Melissa, you via word document, I could start working on all the additions instead of doing in a different document. Because there are a couple of things I need to update. Okay? Council, I'm going to open up the floor to you unless if you want to pass, pass. If you have comment, you could comment. Um, Melissa, they put a chat, how much time we have left? All right. So I'm going to go, uh, Jared, Luke, Valerie and Jimmy. Oh no, sorry. Jimmy's already went. Sorry. My bad, Jimmy. Luke. I mean, Jared, go ahead.
Yep, I'm happy to pass. Thanks.
Okay, uh, Luke, Valerie.
No comment. Thanks for all your work on this.
Valerie?
Um, yeah, thank you very much for working on this. I definitely think we should be communicating this out to people because I don't know that many people know about the evacuation routes, um, in the city and, and other, um, things. So I'm glad the cert committee will work on it. And, um, and I will, um, I, I will, I'll just thank you for your work. Thank you.
Somebody else want to talk? Valerie?
Thank, thank you, Valerie. I will say, Jimmy, that on search committee, like I think the next step, once we clean it up a little bit more is to have a meeting with like some of the stakeholders, like the principals, PTO presidents, right? Churches and stuff like that. So that way they're aware what it is. So that way they could also help like be part of the support system in case we need help and, and in doing so by default, kind of recruiting them a little bit to the start team. So that way they know like this training is, um, available. So that way they go also, um, it goes to be offered to them. So that could be, um, another way to like recruit some of the, the key stakeholders that move, uh, big masses of community members. Okay? All right. So anything else to add, Jimmy? You ready to move to the next one?
Next.
Thank you. Um, it is, uh, two minutes to eight 30. And we are in number, number eight. Public comment. It says PC pitchboarded. Okay. Public comment is the, you're going to put, the ability for members of public to comment on, on items start in front of mayor and council. You could make a comment, um, an item start nod, um, the council will listen to you for three minutes. Up to five minutes. If it's a group, the group, if it's a group, um, every other members forfeit their, um, their ability to speak on behalf of the group. We are, we ask that you are respectful while those three minutes and once they're done, they are done. If you, if it's an item that's in the agenda, if we ask that you also could hold for the item to be addressed. But we understand if you have to leave, um, you could make your public comment and move on. Okay. So I'm gonna ask if there's any member of the public that we currently have that would like to speak. I mean, name, last name, block and street number. And that what could call upon you. Uh, we're going to start first with people that could type on the chat, people on Facebook, and then I'm going to ask, um, I'm going to ask if anybody's on the phone lines and would like to speak. Okay. Because we had that last time and we usually don't have it every so often it happens. So do we have any member of the public that would like to speak that could, um, type on the chat? Mercedes Matamoros. Mercedes Matamoros del 33, this is a Chelsea place, 3316 Chelsea place. The floor is yours for three minutes. Go ahead.
Yes.
Si, te escuchamos.
Okay. Thank you. Tenemos a ocho personas. Gracias, Selena.
Está cerca de la estabilización de la renta o es, es para, para comentarios separados porque pueden hablar cuando esté el punto de la renta.
And, eh, no, es para estabilización de renta. Rent stabilization.
So, uh, Melissa, one number for stabilization in the list. Melissa?
It's number 10.
Okay. Es el número 10 después de comentarios públicos solo faltarían dos. Okay? Pueden, pueden esperar a hablar en la selección de renta o quieren hablar ahorita?
Eh, no, cuando usted desee el tiempo, si es para ahora o lo hacemos después.
Okay, denos siete minutos y vamos a pasar la otra, okay? So I want to talk about restabilization. So I asked them, um, if they would like to wait for their restabilization item or would they like to speak right now? He said, she said, um, she said that it's fine for them to wait for restabilization. Okay? All right. Um, let me see who else is here. So I have, um, where is it? Uh, Ryan, uh, do you want to speak right now for public comment or what we like to speak? It says you're not a resident and, uh, you are with Aoba, correct?
That's correct. And, uh, I'm willing to wait till the actual, uh, we reach the actual topic as well.
Thank you so much. And if you guys could do me a favor and next time put like, quote unquote, what it is, you need to, well, an item of the agenda, let me know. Uh, so Casey Canela también estableció de renta. I will say yes. Nina Young, um, do you need to speak on public comment or an item on the agenda?
Uh, yes, Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to go back a little bit.
You're cutting off Nina, so we're hearing you hot and off.
Yeah, so I just wanted to go back from, um, Pepto tree trimming.
Okay, go ahead. The floor is yours and you are in upshore street.
Right. So I just want to thank, um, the mayor and council, especially council members for being so responsive to some of the concerns expressed by residents on the, the tree trimming. I think the biggest problem is that when you are in kind of the throes of the tree trimming, it really isn't feasible, and this was kind of alluded to, to stop and call public works, to call Rosio or email them because at that time, the damage has already happened. My biggest concern is when we query the contractor, they were not roadside tree experts. They were not certified by, um, the state of Maryland. They told us they were certified by either their agency or Pepto. And so my one recommendation is that the council makes sure that they are, uh, roadside tree expert certified before they come into this town. And I understand that there may be some work with public works and also with the tree committee. But when they're on the ground, they are cutting more than what they, uh, claim to be cutting when they are working with the town committees and public works. And that is really what is damaging our tree canopy. So it's not a surgical cut. It is far more than that. And so and we're noticing again and again that the cuts are not according to standards. They are not cutting back to the collar. And so whatever we can do to have better supervision by both our public works, tree committee or whatever, would be beneficial because it is, um, causing dis- disease in our trees and cuts that are making the trees unstable. I just want to also finally, um, say that I really applaud the work that the cert is doing and some of the work that, um, Jimmy is doing, council member Carlo is doing in terms of the emergency, uh, evacuation and emergency preparedness. And, um, I will throw my hat in working with a cert committee as somebody who has to maintain both their license for CPR and also first aid. So thank you so much for all of your work and what you're doing. And I appreciate the ability to address you this evening. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Anita. And I see Melissa's still on the line. So if you, uh, you guys could connect or send us your email so we could pull you guys in contact or phone number. So that way they could follow up with you. Okay? So Melissa, that'd be two recruits for, for you and, um, you, um, you and Karen for tonight, you know, in the cert team. So that's, um, that's already two for two. Okay? Anybody else wants to join the cert committee? You're welcome to. Please let us know. Um, so, um, any other member of the public that would like to speak on, on this item? Anybody, um, okay. So any, is there anybody on Facebook? That would like to speak, uh, Jared?
No comments on Facebook.
All right. Thank you so much. Is there anybody on the phone that would like to make a comment? Okay. Hearing none. We are going to be closing the public comment. Thank you for everybody that made a comment. I will see you, um, um, how do you call it? Um, uh, the comment was regarding, uh, Pecco and the tree. So, um, Karush Rosio, um, you know, we'll deal with, um, when the excess are when it comes to this, okay? To make sure we're following through and, and create a plan so that we know what else is happening. Okay? And thank you guys for the work on this as well, because I know it's been, it's definitely has, um, it's improved a lot and we'll figure out what else can we done. Okay? All right. So moving on to item number nine, close session summaries. Uh, Vice Mayor Jared Stoffus will read the close, uh, session summaries for Tuesday, January 17th and Sunday, 35th, 2023. Uh, Vice Mayor, of course, yours.
Yep. It's a close session summary for, um, Melissa, this is the wrong one. Oh, wait, sorry. Did? I was thinking of the one on, um, sorry, am I reading the one for February 5th?
The one for January 1st.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot we had, I forgot we had two. I thought we already did this one. I'm, my apologies. And so, okay. Thought for a second I sent you the wrong one. Uh, scroll back up. I'm so sorry. Yeah, there, there were two and I, yeah, this, this one I did not send you on time last time, which is why we're doing it now. Okay. A close session summary to be read in the record, January 17th, um, 606 is virtual. Close inner manitated code, general provisions, article three dash three oh five, uh, B seven. Those who voted to go into closed session, Mayor Selena Benitez, Councilmember Luke Chesek, Councilmember Jared Solsus, Councilmember Valerie Woodall, unanimous of elective officials in attendance, Mayor Selena Benitez, Lu- Councilmember Luke Chesek, Councilmember Jared Saltzus, Councilmember Valerie Woodall. Uh, those in attendance, Mayor Selena Benitez, Councilmember Luke Chesek, Councilmember Jared Saltzus, Councilmember Virginia Tarlo, Councilmember Valerie Woodall, City Manager Karish Kamali, Director of Public Works, Rosio Latori, Director of Human Resources, Cheryl Morris. Actions taken to discuss the appointment, employment assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction. Any other personnel matter that affects more and more specific individuals and topics discussed, uh, the same. And, uh, yep, that was, that was it. And then.
Go ahead, Jared.
Sorry. Uh, close session summary sheet to be read in the record. February 5th, 2023, 1:00 PM, virtual closing or annotated code. General provisions, article three dash three oh five B1 and three oh, three oh five B7. Those who voted go in closed session, Mayor Selena Benitez, Councilmember Luke Chesek, Councilmember Jared Saltzus, Councilmember Valerie Woodall, Councilmember Jimmy Tarlo. Unanimous of elected officials in attendance. Mayor Selena Benitez, Councilmember Luke Chesek, Councilmember Jared Saltzus, Councilmember Valerie Woodall, Councilmember Jimmy Tarlo. Those in attendance, Mayor Selena Benitez, uh, Councilmember Luke Chesek, Councilmember Jared Solsus, Councilmember Jimmy Tarlo, Councilmember Valerie Woodall, City Attorney Alyssa Levon. Actions taken to discuss the appointment, employment assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction. Any other personnel matter that affects more and more specific individuals and account, consult with council, obtain legal advice and topics discussed the same. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Castle. You have heard the summary of, um, of both close sessions. Does anyone has a question? If not, thumbs up and we'll pass to the next item. Valerie, you open your mic. You have a question?
Um, yeah, I just want to note that the, um, the date at the top of both of those, uh, close session summaries was wrong. It was 2023, not 2022.
Yeah, my, my, my apologies there. Still in the wrong year. So, uh, Melissa fixed that. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Luca. Start them up. Thank you, Jimmy. We're good? You're not on camera, Jimmy, so I'm not sure.
I'm good.
Okay. Nice. So Jared, you're good. Okay. Um, thank you so much. This puts us on online with having read all the close session summaries. Vice Mayor, thank you so much for making sure you're on top of it. Luke, your term is coming up pretty soon. You have, you, I mean, you have big, big shoes to fill because Jared is like, um, pointing us at those things and really.
Except he's in the wrong year, but yeah, hopefully he can get that right, Luke.
Room for improvement. All right. Perfect. Thank you so much for that. Um, seeing there is no, no feedback on it. Um, we'll move on. Um, I do have a, a comment from, uh, we have a comment, how do you call it? Uh, from, um, Rosio said, thank you, Ms. Young, for your comments, recommendations going forward. We'll come up with a plan to avoid notices as such the best protection tree canopy. So that was, uh, for Ms. Young. All right. I do have, uh, Ms. Young says, I'd like to ask about the state of the street on 31st and Shepherd. And it's very dangerous for low cars when it's going to be fixed. It's, it looks like the work that was being done was never finished. We had a call it out. That was for public comment. Uh, Judy, I apologize if I didn't see your message prior to that. Okay. So, um, council can, um, Rosio, do you have any information on this? On Shepherd 31st Street? The state of the street?
Yes, that's the work that WSSC was doing there. Um, so WSSC is almost completed there. So once they're done, um, with the job, there, they will be scheduling the paving. So that will probably happen within the next few weeks. We'll have to follow up with, um, Diane with WSSC to find out their exact schedules.
Yeah. So WSSC does sense this monthly communication. Um, I know like we had a meeting, I was, I was there with Rosio as well. We had a meeting and they've been good from that point on and setting us monthly communication. They done that, the work on the bottom. They just waiting for payment and payment takes between 30 to 90 days, Rosio. Depending on the weather and the weather, when it's the cold, it's not going to take. So it's like, they might not do it. So more or less that's kind of where it's at. And right now they have started the work on the, some of the streets that are by, by DC and where we shared that information as well. Okay? One point of information, if you have not signed up to the city's e-notification, email notification notices, please do so, um, because they blast all this information to keep, um, to keep you, um, involved. Yeah. So Judy, we're going to make sure we let them know to take a look at the area to see if there's, um, if there's other stuff they could do. Meantime, they're waiting for that, um, for the payment to happen. Okay? Thank you for your comment. Okay. So now we're moving. Oh, Melissa, you put it on the top of the deck. No wonder I couldn't see it. Okay. Moving on to item number 10. Discussion and vote on Orange, uh, 1022 restabilization, 20 minutes. We do have, um, like the, the most complete is one that you guys have seen. As you guys know, we have been discussing restabilization for several, several, several months. And, um, and, um, thank you all the community members that have shown up priorly. Uh, this was brought to attention by, by them. And I just definitely want to thank the various organizations that have been working with them, um, including CASA and, and others to make sure that, um, the voices are being heard. So council, uh, Melissa, thank you so much. So council and community, you have in front of you, um, Orange 10 dash 2023. So as a point of order, I'm going to do basically a run through of things that have been like information that's been put forward. And then I'm going to open it up to, uh, mayor and council in the community. Okay? Good? Council, thumbs up? All right. Cool. So you have right here, uh, you moved it too fast. Thank you. Do some meaning the code of the city of Maronia to have chapter 3D restabilization to create a rent installation board to establish a rent civilization program. Prohibiting rent increases above a specific amount without authorization from the restability. So, um, rent civilization board establishing fees and penalties associated for the restabilization. So just a point of clarity, the ones that, um, the change of the, uh, the change of what the, what the amount will be, it's, it'll be on mayor and council. Okay. The board is for them to go talk and, and, and appeal or inform. All right? Okay. So, um, you see the first warehouse, they're still the same. Uh, whereas according, uh, to Point2homes.com US neighborhood, you see the whole spread right there. Uh, renters occupied 2,153 units or 75% of the seating dualist unit. Whereas according to Department of Housing and Urban Development, fair market rent, the dollar amount below wish the rent for 40% of standard quality rental housing. Unit falls in the Washington Arlington, Alexander area, which in Tuscon, Georgia's county is 1,765 for a two bedroom apartment and A thousand seven hundred sixty five for a two bedroom apartment and. Whereas, and you saw the whole, like, little stretch right there is crossed out, and then we, we, um. Move it to say a hot small area fair market for rent for two bedroom housing in the Marania, simple tools, and when two equals. Equates to two dollars and twenty four cent hourly wage. Or a four thousand two hundred and forty annual wage. And this is from the data that you see right there, N L I C, N L I H C. That are key going, um, whereas the two census tracts containing the vast majority of renters in the city, um, eighty. Forty eight point one and eighty forty eight point two, the median household income is fifty thousand and sixty thousand respectively. While the remaining standard track for the Mount Rainier eighty four seven, which contributes only single family home. Keep going, Melissa. Has a medium household income of eighty thousand five hundred, that are provided by United States Census Bureau. Um, whereas in twenty twenty four point eight of the rents in the city pay more than thirty percent of their household rent in, income for rent. Okay? Um, can you move up just a little, so I can see the section? Okay, it says the section is thirty, um, three D dash one oh one findings, right? On chapter three for rent stabilization. Um. Uh, rent increases have a page wages over the last few decades, rent increases in the city have a pace, the customer price index for the region, including Marania. Section three D one and two definitions, the term restabilization lines means sixty percent of consumer price index, C P I. The motto for the rent charge in the last calendar year preceding the proposed increase, or if the unit is vacant. But was previously rented sixty percent of C P I multiplied by the rent that could have been charged. Had the unit been occupied in the preceding calendar year, the city should pub, publicize the brand, seven essential allows in its website. Section three D one oh three, the city Marania rest of the station board established, the board should consist of five members appointed by the council. At least three of whom should be tenants, at least one who should be a landlord, and at least one who should be a homeowner. Okay? Um, done, done. Okay, right there, hold on. Three D one of four limitations for increases, a landlord may increase the annual rent for dueling unit in amount up to. But not in access of rent stabilization allowance unless the landlord has been granted the right to charge additional rent. Um, by the installation board, um, the limitation of the amount of the annual rent increase should apply. Regardless of the charge of the, regardless of the change in occupancy in a residential rental unit. Except as otherwise allow under section three D one oh five. Okay, and this is like something that we're still working on, this is rental properties that are less than, uh, blank five years old. Uh, blank years old, right, so that could be, um, so that's something that we're working on, so between five and fifteen. Uh, rental units in honor occupied buildings, that was there in the last, um. In the last one, so that shouldn't be highlighted as yellow, but we repeat it is fine. The rental registry, the city shall create and maintain a public accessible rental registry containing all. Legal rental units within the city of Marania indicated which units are subject to rent stabilization, the rental register should be published and posted in the city website. A webpage, all rental properties must be under rental registry, our registered properties cannot legally raise the rent and are subject to municipal citation. At a minimal, the rental registry must include, um, for each unit. The year built, the number of bedrooms, the address of property, the unit number, the date of, the date that currently is began. The rent as a January first of each year, the name of the multifamily property, the name, mailing address, phone number. A mailing address of each owner and manager of registered property, and if the property is rent stabilization, um. Definitely want to make a notice that some of this information is already, um, collected. Through our code, uh, department, so this will expand that information, like, two of the points will expand. Provide, providing false information to a register is illegal under the ordinance is subject to municipal citations according to section three D one oh seven. Yearly notice will be sent to landlords of all rental properties. Remaining, uh, reminding them to register their rental units and pay the rental license fee and informing them of the rent stabilization allowance. Okay, E to assist and cover administrative expenses of the city associated with the rental registry. And other provisions of this ordinance, the city shall annually collect a fee from all registered rental properties as determined by its annual fee. According that is enacted alongside annual budget in this first year of the ordinance existing, the fee structure should be. Uh, fifty dollars per unit per rental properties for four or more units. And twenty five dollars per unit per rental properties, uh, within three or four units, and the section two got, um, at this point is crossed out, um. So, take it up. Yeah, and it's just our signature, so take it up to the, to the top, Melissa. So. This is basically what, um, what is being proposed. Um, you guys heard a summary of the additions that were added since we last, um, read it. Um, as has been updated, we'd be having, uh, obviously, multiple, like. Multiple meetings, um, in the open. In the work sessions and legislative sessions, um, including today, obviously. Um, and we have basically put a team to gather all this information and, and pull it through. All right, so, saying that, um. I will start with saying. We are. A city that. Has a lot of great residents. And by the numbers you have seen, uh, the wages, um, definitely have not, like, keep up with the pace of rentals. Um, costs, the rental costs are definitely greater. And at this point, we continue to, um, lose residents. Rent stabilization will give, um, the ability for renters. To have this ability to know what the rent increase will be up to, and for the landlords to be able to project on what they also do. There are exemptions to the cap that, um, that they could present. Uh, to the board in case, um, in case they qualify, that percentage could change. But at the same time, it is, um, up to Mayor and Council to do, to approve the overall picture. Of what, uh, the rental cap, uh, might be. To be clear, this is not rent controlled. Rights will increase up to that percentage. Um, this is not stuff from growth to happen, and we have heard of, um, there's at least a hundred and eighty different cities. That have rent stabilization, that have been able to prosper and triumph and understand, take care of, um, the residents, um, so. I will leave it at that, but definitely thank you to the whole entire council and the various residents for. For taking on this conversation, you know, and, uh, not shying away of, of an important matter. Okay, so I'm gonna open up the floor to the council members for next steps, uh, there was some information that we put forward. Um, I'm gonna go Luke, Jimmy, in this case, um. So that way we can figure out where we're at, some of them were still working on it and, um. But overall, this is what, um, ordinance looked like, um, as of this point, go ahead, um, Luke and then Jimmy.
Thank you, Mayor, um, Melissa, could you just scroll down a, a little bit, just so that we pick up on? Yeah, that's good right there, that's perfect. Um, I just wanted to highlight a little bit more of the explanation behind what we did here, because. I think it's important for the public to understand the rationale here, um, and, and why we went with a sixty percent of C P I. Um, rate, because there's a lot of thought and data that went into this, and this is, there's a really strong. Um, uh, sort of rationale behind what the city did here, and so I just want to make sure that's on the record. Um, so what you'll see in here is that currently the, the annual salary. That it takes to afford a two bedroom apartment in the two oh seven one two zip code, so that's Mount Rainier. Um, some unincorporated areas here, but mostly just Mount Rainier, um, it's forty nine thousand two hundred and forty eight dollars. Um, the C P I last year was six point five percent. Um, so if you apply that C P I, let's say an apartment was able to increase their rent by six point five percent. That would be a three thousand two hundred dollar increase to that two bedroom apartment. Um, so that would bring that, um, that, uh, that affordability of that rental unit up to fifty two thousand four hundred and forty. Dollars in an average salary, um, now that would be really problematic for, um, our, our renters, because as you can see. Um, in the paragraph there at the bottom of the page, um, the median household income for, um, one of the census tracts that includes. Um, you know, the large part of our renters, um, their median income is only fifty thousand one eighty four below that fifty two thousand dollar mark. Um, and then the other census tract, they're only, you know, barely above that at like sixty thousand eight eight two. Um, so it was important for us to find, um. A number, um, that would make sense, and sixty percent of C P I, which if you. Um, multiply that times the six and a half percent C P I from last year would allow for an increase of three point nine percent. Um, which would be an increase in rent, um, to fifty one thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. Um, that would be, um, you know, really close to what the average, uh, salary is. Um, for one of the census tracts, um, and obviously stay under the sixty thousand dollar range. Um, so that figure there, that sixty percent of C P I, um, was done with some thought. Um, and looking, um, at the economic situation of both our renters. Um, at the macro level, really right in this area at the micro level. Um, and then, um, also looking at the way, um, rents, um, are increasing for this area. Um, so there's a lot of thought put in there, um, as Selena mentioned, there's still some work to do on the amount of time. We want to allow a new development to, um, not, uh, not have to comply with this rules, and so that's work. Um, that we're gonna try to do, we have a work session coming up, and we can talk about that there. Um, the one thing I just wanted to remind folks on the, the other highlighted portion on the exempted, on the exemption. Which is an owner occupied, um, rental unit. Just wanted to be clear that that's where the owner occupies, um, one of the spaces in, in the building, so in a lot of. I just want to make sure we're clear on this and the understanding, and anyone can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, it doesn't necessarily mean that owner has to share a bathroom or a kitchen. It just means, for example, in a lot of our homes, sometimes we'll have a resident who lives in that house and then rents out a couple of other rooms. They may have their own kitchenette or whatnot, um, so, um, those folks would be exempted as well, because they sort of live in that house. Um, and I think that's all I wanted to say, um, and look forward to, um, further discussion here. Um, I want to thank the mayor again, I think, you know, we've had a lot of folks. Um, tell us how increasing rent really affects how far they can stretch their paycheck. And I think what this data shows, um, and what, um, the way we've tried to narrowly tailor this legislation. Um, is to address that concern that's backed up by the testimony of all those, um, folks in the neighborhood. Um, and so I will stop there and just, uh, thank everybody for their time.
Thank you so much, Luke, for, um, pointing those out, um, I think the other thing that we also have to understand that, like, that third track. The third track auto is, um. A lot, mostly like single family homes, there's still a lot of rentals. So sometimes it could be skewed as like the rental, the people living in those apartments are making so much more money. But it, it, it basically thrown off by, by the, by the income of the houses. Right, so that's what we wanted to make sure we also addressed heavily, where like it was very much like rentals out of the three tracks. So it gives you an estimate of where we're at, because obviously the apartment buildings. They're in the third track are, are definitely like, um, the numbers are, are very much the same. Um, okay, so Jimmy, I'm gonna open up the floor to you, go ahead. You're on mute, Jimmy.
Yeah, I'm trying to unmute it, you hear me now? Yeah.
We hear you.
Uh, just, uh. Procedure, uh, so I was a little confused, so this is gonna go back to a work session? Is that, is that mayor's intention, so we're not trying to actually pass it today, is that correct, Mayor?
I will say we will have the discussion, and if we could. Decide on what the final number, this thing is ready to vote, it's up to you guys, but every time, every single time it's gonna be on the agenda, it's gonna be with a possibility of vote.
So, so what, so what are the details that have to be done to get this resolved?
I think the only one. Yeah. I think the only one that we haven't filled in the blank is, um, the year when it will apply. Um, I do have, um, a roster that we share with you guys of like where did our buildings are established. And, uh, more or less what it looks like, but, but overall, it's like that's it, so.
Well, we need to have you propose something, so it's a specific. Document, and I, I know Luke raised the issue about, uh, one people, but it seems to say that, uh, new fifteen years. People, new, new developments, there's a fifteen year exemption, maybe I got that wrong.
It's currently silent, Jimmy, that's the. What the mayor was just explaining is that she's, she's getting some information on that front as far as the age of our apartment complexes. And that's the only missing piece right now is what that year. Mark will be, I think there's proposal on the table of just five years and then fifteen years has been in a prior.
It's clear that ninety nine percent of the apartment complexes are at least forty five, forty years old, nineteen seventy. I don't see that's debate, you know, debate, there's only, the only new. Uh, facilities, or, well, you know, you know, I, I take that back, artist loft and the, uh, you know, probably more like, uh. Twenty years old, so I think fifteen is a big number. But I mean, if we want to nail this today, we have to put those numbers in, that's all I'm saying.
So, I'm, I'm open to doing fifteen, that's fine, and if it needs to be addressed later, then it's addressed later. But I could say fifteen, it was between ten and fifteen anyways, and there's about two. There's about two or three maybe apartments that fall on it, because, like I said, I apologize, um. That document does exist, because they've seen it, um, the staff, or at least two of the staff members have seen it, but there's only two apartment buildings that will fall under the. Less than fifteen, one of them is seven years, um, six years, and, um, the other one's about the same time.
So, May, I think you have to actually put a, I, you can't, I mean, you actually have to just.
Yep, I could put fifteen on it if you guys are ready to vote on it today.
Fifteen, and then we can see if there's debate on that, so I mean, I think. If there's debate, or you want to, if, if Luke or other people want to tape it to work session, that's fine, too, just. And I just want to just ma- mention, if I haven't done already, I don't always agree with the mayor. But, you know, in the twenty years I've been in town, uh, this town has been nominated, uh, has been dominated by the minority of the people in it. In the community, if you even look, you know, or the council people, that, uh, no one has really spoken up for the. For the six thousand renters in our community, and, uh. I give the mayor credit for being the voice of that community, and this is obviously the number one issue on their mind, and. From, for, I don't know how many years, no one has actually, you know, talked about what, you know, everybody's talked about what the. The homeowners feel, which is important, and, you know, uh, everybody in this council is a homeowner. But, you know, it's, it's really important that we hear the voice and we hear their concerns, and. I give the mayor, you know, tremendous credit for, you know, placing at a table and, and being. You know, for the first time again in all my years, that we actually have, uh, residents of the apartments coming to city council meetings. Talking, uh, telling how they feel, people, you know, from the Latino community. And, uh, she deserves, uh, great credit for, for doing that and for leading this. Uh, I'm ready to vote on this, but I think, you know, this, you know, when we pass ordinances, you know, it's. You know, you, you actually have to, you know, put in details, so, uh, if you, Mayor, if you have some specific things. You should just propose it and put it in, and then people can say they want it amended, because you can't, you know, it's hard to vote something that's not really. All right, I'll shut up, go ahead.
So, we're gonna put obviously more time, Melissa, give us like ten minutes, realistically, maybe twenty, because you do have a lot of speakers. So fifteen, what was in the original one? So this is what fifteen was, was presented, so if it stays at fifteen, nothing has changed from the original format. So Melissa, you call it fifteen and leave it as is, um, and if this, like, you guys are ready to vote, like, obviously, I'm ready to vote, I've been ready for vote like months ago. Okay, so, we'll leave it like that, if there's no change, you'll stay like with the original format that was introduced at fifteen. All right, thank you, Jimmy, so much, and also thank you for your work on this, um, it's been a, a lot of lifting from, from all of us, because. You know, it's an ordinance, it's not a, a C C as, um, you know, as sometimes our beloved letters that we love dearly, you know, but I thank you also, like, you know, for all your efforts. Uh, Lucas, well, and, and the rest of the council and, and the various organizations and the residents, because it's taken a lot. Um, okay, so, um. Thank you, so you add the fifteen, Melissa, for right now, and, I mean, you'll stand the original one, unless you want to discuss and change it, it's, it's fine as well. All right, so I got Luca, I got Jimmy, uh, Jared, Valerie.
Yeah, no, I just, uh, just want to comment, this is the product of a, a lot of hard work and a lift by the, especially by the mayor. Um, and Selena, we've, I really much appreciate your leadership. On this point, and, you know, I just want to reflect, you know, as Jimmy said, there's a lot of, um. You know, a lot of our engagement, uh, on city council from residents often comes from, from, from a very narrow. Narrower slice of, uh, you have the city, um. You know, on this issue, we've seen tremendous engagement from, from renters, uh, which are the majority of our city. People of color who are the majority of our city. And from, you know, folks that are much more working class who make up constitute the majority of our city as well. And I, you know, I think it is really important to, you know, be able to put forth a policy that supports and addresses concerns. And these are, you know, very fundamental concerns about housing affordability and, you know, and and the impacts, you know, year over year that changes in that affordability are having. So, you know, I want to thank, thank everyone for in the community for coming to speak. I wanted to also thank, you know, everyone in council, particularly Selena for your leadership on this topic and for your for the work you've done, you know, lifting up the voices of people that have often been unheard. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I I need to ask you guys for my time. I know we discussed it, but we officially have to vote on it. Okay, can we have at least twenty minutes on the clock? Council, twenty minutes on the clock. I make the motion to add twenty minutes on the clock. Any seconds?
Second.
Thank you so much. Any discussion? Here and then we are going to add twenty minutes on the clock. Thank you, Melissa, for keeping us on on track. Okay, so fifteen is the last remaining one that was added. Everything else is accurate to it as well. Okay, so let's move on to Valerie. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mayor, for working on this and thank you for Luke for putting in more time on this and and helping us get to a good place in terms of the data. I think that's really phenomenal work that we've been doing. I think I think I'm excited to work on this. I think what I would like to do is bring it to a work session for one last go around. And I also wonder, do we have to reintroduce it so it doesn't have typos and various data sources? Do we have to reintroduce it at the next legislative session? Okay, um, okay. Well, I, yeah, thank you guys very much. I look forward to finalizing it and getting it done. So thank you.
Yeah, some of these are highlighted. We're basically placeholders. And then how do you call it? Quite a few of them, like the rental units, owner occupant example, that was there since the beginning. So this has been like talk and address like multiple. I think we were basically filling in the holes, but the essence is like, if we already agree on sixty and I mean, that was that's like the biggest piece. Everything else is like more administrative than anything. You know, and and that could be worked out like between our recommendation from the staff to move it forward, right? But like I said, like the application, the code already has an application that they use. It'll be just adding the two different items. Currently, various of the apartment do submit the units, the address, the unit numbers. The only thing though, after I like, you know, it's like how much they they charge to those units. But I've actually seen the the files and that's like not like last. This is like the person, the person here. Okay. So counsel, if you don't have nothing else to add, I am going to be open up to the community. But to me, this this legislation is ready to vote today if need be. Right? Anything else administrative like that could be like easily arranged. It's not a problem. You call, so say enacted in thirty days or sixty days if you choose to to finalize some of the administrative work that we need to do. Okay, so be fully aware of of that. Okay, so I'm going to open up to the floor for council. Open up to the floor for the residents. And I thank you guys because it's been several months you guys have been here. So I I know they're they're ready to for us to decide on this. This has been, this is like, at this point, it's like, it feels like this is going to be dragged longer than the recycle cans that we had. Okay, so I'm going to start with the top of the the top of the list. Let me see. I'm sorry. I'm like backtracking a little bit. Okay. Casa, are you here to translate correctly?
Yes, I'm translating. And so the each resident will say their entire comments and then I'll translate their entire comments.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Trent, for that. It definitely comes in handy. All right, so we'll go ahead and and start with Mercedes Matamoros, thirty three hundred Chauncey Place Mercedes. Puedes leer todo tu comentario y Trente va a traducir después, okay? El el micrófono es tuyo. Buenas noches. Dale.
I'm gonna talk in English. I'm gonna talk in English. Hi, my name is Mercedes Matamoros. I lived eight years in the city of Mount Rainier and I'm here at Council Juanica because I live in your district, Mount Rainier. And we need of your help and support to pass the rent stabilization law for our city. It's urgent. These year yearly rent rises are too much for us. Thank you for listening to us.
Okay, thank you so much. Moving on to the next person, we have Ryan from the lobbyist firm Aoba. Go ahead, Ryan. The floor is yours.
Mi nombre es Casey Canela. Madre de niño vivo en el treinta y tres cero cero de la Buchanan Street. Llevo ocho años en la ciudad de Mon Rainier. Me aumento fue más de cien dólares y estoy aquí ya basta. No es justo. Un aumento intrahumano, infrahumano. Que hace con nosotros los malos mantenimientos. En nuestros apartamentos reportamos que las cosas nos no se no nos ponen atención a nuestras necesidades. Con mis compañeros, una injusticia de la renta. Justa, los dueños de los edificios no piensan en nosotros y nosotros pagamos mil ochocientos cincuenta y no nos ajusta lo que ganamos. Mi esposo y yo mi esposo y yo me quedé sin trabajo desde la pandemia y no he podido encontrar trabajo hasta ahora. No podemos porque lo que venimos pagando no nos ajusta ni para poder decirle a nuestros hijos que vamos a comer fuera. Porque también es todo está carísimo ahora mismo. Trabajo no hay, aumento y al contrario le quitan a uno cuando uno falta un trabajo. Nosotros lo hemos ayudado con nuestras votaciones. Necesitamos el respaldo de ustedes ahora mismo. Finalmente, le pido a la alcaldesa y al concejalles que por favor piensen en nosotros, los inquilinos de Mon Rainier. Y apes y pasen la ley de estabilización de la renta. Agradezco muchísimo a la alcaldesa y al concilio por haber escuchado nuestras preocupaciones y además de llevar adelante esta ley de estabilización de renta que es muy necesaria. Muchas gracias.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Cassie Canela and I'm I'm living at thirty three hundred Betschwana Street and I've been in the city of Mount Rainier for eight years. This past year my rent increase was a hundred dollars and it's not fair because the rent can continue going up when the conditions don't improve and the bad maintenance that happens in our apartments at times. We report things and they do not really pay attention to us and our needs. So I joined my colleagues in asking for a fair rent that the building owners, you know, as we pay one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars right now, that rent continues to go up where where when our earnings don't go up. My husband had lost his job during the pandemic. I've not been able to find other work as and it's been hard on all of us and our children. Sometimes we have to, you know, stop spending money and instead of the work getting better, right now I find that I'm losing days on my work schedule. We have supported supported you with our votes and now we ask for your support. I'm asking for you council members and the mayor to think of us renters in Mount Rainier and to pass the rent stabilization bill. And I'm very grateful to you all for having listened to our concerns and demands and carrying out this much needed law. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. I'm gonna do a pause because the next person on the on the call is Ryan, Ryan, Ryan Washington from the lobbyist group Aoba. Ryan, the floor is yours.
Yes, sorry I missed your call earlier. I was having some audio issues, but I have no problem letting Casa go first so they can translate and do all that if that makes easier.
Thank you so much. Go ahead, Trent. So quién quién va a ser la siguiente persona a hablar? So. Dale.
Buenas noches, alcaldesa y concilio. Le damos muchas gracias por el tiempo que nos da a escuchar, a escucharlos. Mi nombre es Gil Machacón y vivo en el treinta y tres, treinta y dos Buchanan Street, apartamento dos cero uno. Llevo seis años en la ciudad de Mon Rainier. Mi renta es de mil seiscientos treinta y cinco. Mi aumento fue de ochenta dólares bilis. Y y vivido en Mon Rainier, esta ciudad ha sido buena para nosotros. Mis niños les gusta su escuela y quiero quedarme aquí desde mil seiscientos treinta y cinco. Mil seiscientos treinta y cinco.
Gilma, no te escucho.
Y hoy.
Ahora sí, ahora sí.
Hoy sí, okay. Les gusta el ambiente, tienen sus amigos y eso es bueno para ellos. Nosotros los apoyamos con los votos. Ahora nosotros necesitamos su respaldo, por favor. Finalmente les pido que por favor es urgente que esta ley se pase. Ya estamos según año más y ya mucho lo que ellos hacen y es escuchado y he escuchado a mis vecinos sus aumentos también. Ahora les pagamos bilis de agua, parqueo, luz, todo por separado y es demasiado lo que están haciendo con nosotros. Pienso en, piensen en nosotros, los inquilinos somos muchos en la ciudad de Mon Rainier. Y no queremos los incrementos de renta altas, por favor. Pasen una ley de estabilización de renta. Ya, gracias. Agradezco muchísimo a la alcaldesa y al concilio por haber escuchado nuestras preocupaciones y además llevar adelante esta ley de estabilización de renta que es muy necesaria. Gracias.
Trent, if you're speaking, we cannot hear you.
Thank, oh, sorry about that. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We thank you very much for this time you're giving and listening to us. My name is Gil Machacon and I live at thirty three, thirty two Buchanan Street, apartment two zero one. I've been in the city of Mount Rainier for six years and my rent is one thousand six hundred and thirty five dollars. My increase just last year was eighty dollars. I love living in Mount Rainier. The city is good for us. My children like the school. We want the ability to stay here. All of us love the environment and the friends that we have. I ask that you please pass this legislation to stop the rents from increasing. It is urgent that this be passed because now we're in another year and we have already seen the and heard from our neighbors of increases. We pay everything separately, the water, the parking, the electricity. And with the rent increasing going up as well, you know, along with all of that other separate payments, it's too much for us. There are so many of us renters in the city of Mount Rainier and we just can't take the high rent increases. So please pass the rent stabilization. I'm really grateful to all of you for taking the time to listen to us and passing this very necessary law.
Muchas gracias.
Yeah, Susana.
Buenas noches, alcaldesa y concilio. Desde ya le doy las gracias por dejarnos entrar y escuchar nuestras necesidades. Mi nombre es Susana Coca y vivo en el treinta y tres cero ocho de la Chauncey Place por nueve años. Y mi renta es de mil seiscientos treinta y ocho más bilis y mi aumento fue de noventa dólares. Y hemos estado experimentando los altos aumentos de la renta y también de los bilis altos. De ellos mismos nos damos cuenta por los vecinos de que ellos también están pasando por lo mismo con sus hijos y queremos que sigan aquí en esta ciudad luchar por la justa renta. Y así como nosotros los apoyamos con los, los apoyamos a ustedes con nuestros votos. Esperamos que también ustedes nos apoyen con nuestras peticiones porque sé que trabajan por la comunidad hispana. Por aquellos que no somos escuchados solo por no tener un estatus en este país. Gracias a Dios están ustedes para escucharnos y espero en Dios puedan ayudarnos para resolver estas peticiones. Que Dios me los bendiga grandemente y puedan resolver pronto un, como se llama, una estabilización de renta. Asimismo, pues también nosotros estamos pasando un aumento. Pagamos hasta por la basura. El agua pues ahora nos vino con un aumento más. Antes pagaba cuarenta y cinco dólares, ahora pagamos setenta. Y los trabajos están bajos y todo está caro y el sueldo pues no aumenta. Pues esperamos en Dios y en ustedes ante todo que puedan ayudarnos. Agradezco mucho a la alcaldesa, al concilio por haber escuchado nuestras preocupaciones y demandas y llevar adelante esta estabilización de renta que es muy necesaria. Que Dios me los bendiga a todos.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We thank you for letting us and listening to us. My name is Susana Coca and I've lived at thirty three zero eight Chauncey Place for nine years. And my rent is one thousand six hundred and thirty eight dollars plus the bills. And this past year alone, my increase was ninety dollars. We have been experiencing the rent high increases for all of my years living here. We realize that the neighborhood is all going through the same thing and that we and our children want to continue to stay here. And the way that we think we can do that is by fighting for a fair rent. That is why we're here to ask you to pass this law because we know that in this new year, things have already continued to go up and that this rent stabilization law will prevent further increases. Like we support you with our vote, we are asking you to support us. We, you know, the Latina community sometimes feel like we don't have a voice. You know, we may not have status, but we are here and we deserve the same rights just like everyone else. We are so grateful to you and Mayor and Council for listening to our concerns. I want to finally say that, you know, the rent is going up, but the other fees too, the trash fees, the water fees. That is why we have to make a stand for this. Thank you.
Muchas gracias.
Carmen.
Buenas noches, alcaldesa y concilio. Mi nombre es Carmen. Mi nombre es Carmen y vivo en veintisiete cero tres de la Allison Street. Y mi renta ha sido aumentada. Este pago mil setecientos me aumentaron cien dólares de renta. Y esperando en Dios que la ilumine a todos ustedes, a la alcaldesa y concilio. Y por esta razón es que vengo a ustedes a tocar su corazón sensible para que nos ayude a base, pasar una ley de control de renta. Perdón, de estabilización de renta. Mi hija y yo nos gusta aquí porque tengo todo cerca y además que mi clínica tengo problema con la vista, entonces este me gusta aquí esto de este apartamento aquí donde vivo y esperando que se haga control de renta. Estabilización de renta, perdón. Te agradezco mucho a la alcaldesa y concilio por por haber escuchado nuestra preocupación y demanda. Y de llevar esta ley de estabilización de renta, que la necesitamos y gracias, gracias, alcaldesa y concilio. Buenas noches. Que Dios se le bendiga a todos. La alcaldesa, la alcaldesa y concilio. Adiós.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Carmen. I'm from Santo Domingo. And I live at twenty seven oh three Allison Street, apartment one, where I've been in my for two years. And this past year, my rent increase went up a hundred dollars. For this, I ask you to touch your hearts so that you can help us pass the rent stabilization. My daughter and I would not have moved from here because we already are here. My daughter and I would not have moved from here because we already are here. I have an illness and living in Mount Rainier has helped because it's a good city for us with the clinic, the access to transportation. But we can't continue to take all of these rent increases. I'm very grateful to the mayor and the council for listening to our concerns and demands and moving forward with this rent stabilization. Thank you.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Iber Guzmán. Vivo, perdón, alcaldesa y concilio, vivo en la 32 de sentido de Los Queenstown. Y venimos ahora, bueno, con todos los compañeros siempre, pidiéndoles la ayuda a ustedes y que sigamos en la lucha de la estabilización de la renta. Sabemos que cuando llegamos aquí ellos dicen, por ejemplo, es mil trescientos cincuenta, pero cada año lo van subiendo cincuenta, sesenta, cien dólares. O sea, como quien dice en diez años vamos a pagar más de dos mil dólares. Entonces siempre a ustedes pidiéndoles ese apoyo, que se pongan en nuestro lugar porque la renta aumenta pero el salario no. Yo tengo cuatro años viviendo acá en Los Queenstown. Este lugar está bonito, pero también tiene algunas cuestiones que no están, digamos, adecuadas. Uno es el alza de la renta y también hay otras cosas que hay que darle mucha prioridad. Ya que ustedes esta noche pues están dándonos ese tiempo a nosotros, ponen tiempo también para cada uno de nosotros. Más que todo lo que estamos pidiendo es eso, que se legalice la estabilización de la renta y viendo pues que primero en Dios y en ustedes pues lo vamos a lograr.
Good afternoon, mayors and council. My name is Eva Pullman and I live at 3262 Queenstown Drive. And I have been in the complex for four years. We're here today to continue to fight to pass a rent stabilization law. Beginning in the new year, we do not know how much we will get increased in the next year. But our rents go up fifty, sixty or a hundred dollars every year. What I'm paying now, it'll soon be over two thousand dollars. The rents have gone up so much, our wages have not grown up. So we ask that you touch your hearts and that you think of us when you're voting for us. For this reason, we ask that this is urgent to do this. We are grateful to the mayor and the council for listening to our concerns and moving forward with this rent stabilization.
Primero quiero agradecerles a ustedes por el tiempo que toman cada martes pues que estamos haciendo esta reunión y también por tomar pues en cuenta todas las preocupaciones que nosotros tenemos. Y le agradezco a la alcaldesa, el concilio, pasen buenas noches.
So we are grateful for you to listening to us once again. We are here and we are going to continue to be here. And we want you to all have a good night. And I also forgot to say that, you know, we, we hope to God that we will continue to move forward in this.
Buenas noches, estimada alcaldesa y concilio. Dios les bendiga a cada uno de ustedes. Muchas gracias por el tiempo que nos dejan entrar en sus reuniones. Mi nombre es Rosmeris y Fuentes y estoy aquí desde el comienzo de la lucha y seguiré hasta el final. Y vivo en el 3318 Chauncey Place, apartamento 101, Mount Rainier, Maryland. Y mi renta es de mil seiscientos dólares más bilis. Quiero agradecer a la alcaldesa y al concilio por darme la oportunidad de estar aquí y compartir mis palabras. Yo he vivido en Mount Rainier por dieciséis años y ya tenemos una vida, mi esposo y yo aquí en la ciudad. Y deseamos seguir aquí. Nos gusta vivir acá también, no nos queremos mover de este lugar. Venimos hoy a ustedes a ser los presentes, que seguimos en la lucha. Nosotros les hemos apoyado en las votaciones. Ahora necesitamos su respaldo, por favor.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. And, you know, I've been in these meetings since the beginning and I will be here until the end. I live at 3318 Chauncey Place in Mount Rainier. My rent is sixteen hundred dollars plus the additional bills that I pay outside of that. I want to thank the mayor and the council for giving me the opportunity to be here and share my words. I've lived in Mount Rainier for sixteen years and my husband and I have a life here. This is the city. We want to continue to be here. So that's why I will be here till the end of this fight. We have been living through extreme rent increases all around us. We've heard about now, you know, what's going on in Laurel, in Bladensburg. We know that it's happening here in Mount Rainier too with us. But we need, and that's why we need the protections. Mayor and council, please pass a rent stabilization law now. Every day that we do not have this law, the owners increase our rent. Thank you.
Hemos estado viviendo los aumentos de renta extremos y aquí cerca de nosotros en Laurel y Blendesburg no queremos lo mismo en Mount Rainier, queremos protecciones para los inquilinos de Mount Rainier. Alcaldesa y concilio, por favor pasen una ley de estabilización de renta ya. Cada día que no tenemos esta ley, los propietarios nos pueden aumentar la renta. Por favor pasen la estabilización de renta. Porque ya nos va a tocar renovar el contrato y seguir con este mismo problema pues ya no aguantamos más. Y también necesitamos que, por favor, manden a un inspector para que pongan un contador de agua en cada apartamento porque nos están cobrando muy cara el agua y a puro tanteo. También nos sorprendieron desde el mes pasado porque, por ejemplo, nos han cobrado a veces sesenta y cuatro dólares, a veces ochenta, ochenta y cuatro, ochenta y siete, noventa. Y de repente el mes pasado nos llegó de ciento seis, ahora en este mes nos llegó de ciento nueve. Y entonces no es justo de que nos anden cobrando el agua así al puro tanteo porque por lo menos nosotros acá en mi apartamento vivimos tres personas y algunos apartamentos tal vez viven más personas y no es justo que todos paguemos por igual. Cuando nos deberían de poner un contador porque así se sabe realmente cuánto lo que uno consume y puede uno llegar a pagar. Entonces les pedimos de favor que nos ayuden en ese sentido y les agradecemos muchísimo por su valioso tiempo, por prestarnos atención. Y esperamos de que nos ayuden, por favor, y que Dios me les bendiga a cada uno. Les deseamos feliz noche.
So we need the protection for renters now. Our lease renewal is about to run out and so our rents will go up again, so we can't take more. The rent is not the only issue going up. Our water bills have also gone up tremendously. Our water bills in our complex are divided equally even though many of us use a lot less water than others. And that bills are going up a lot. So we ask also in the future to look at the problem with the water bills in our apartment complex too. It's not, it's not right how everything continues to go up. We ask for your support. We need your support. Have a great night and we appreciate you all very much.
Thank you so much. Can I get a small pause? I just need council to add more time. I was just trying to finish for the translations to happen. Council, I need, we still have quite a few speakers on deck for this item. Can I get at least ten more minutes on the clock?
Make a motion to add ten minutes. Second?
Any discussions? Yes. Objection, abstention? Here now, we'll go ahead and add ten more minutes to the clock. Thank you so much. So acabamos de sumar diez minutos más porque nos importa escuchar lo que están diciendo los residentes. Y por eso vamos a ceder el aumento del número. Basically let them know that it was important for us to hear the residents and we're adding more, more, more time for that, for that specific reason, so we're here to listen to them. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. The microphone is still yours.
Hola, buenas noches. Soy Ada Merlos. Más que todo esto va dirigido a Celina para decirle de lo que estamos pasando aquí en estos momentos. Este, llevamos una vida en esta ciudad de estos edificios de Mount Rainier por diecisiete años, ya para dieciocho años viviendo en estos altos aumentos de renta. Fue de ochenta dólares, ahora estamos pagando mil cuatrocientos noventa y un dólares. Estamos aquí para pedirle el favor que nos ayude a que esta ley se pase. Así como nosotros la hemos ayudado en momentos de las votaciones a los hispanos que están acá, este, bogando por nosotros. También nosotros queremos que ellos ahora los escuchen la petición, pasen esta ley pronto que sea posible porque ya entramos otro año y no sabemos cuánto los van a aumentar. No podemos estar así. Ayúdenos, nosotros los apoyamos a ustedes en votaciones, ahora nosotros los necesitamos. Y la otra cosa es que les quiero decir es que, de que los han metido la botada de la basura, tenemos que pagar el agua y este pagando ochenta dólares y a ver cuándo lo viene el aumento. Y una infección en las lavanderías porque esa es una votación de agua y no es posible que nosotros estemos pagando el agua que todos botan. Y las lavanderías no sirven y se llenan de agua y nosotros tenemos que estar en el charco de agua. Hay que pasar una infección. Si ellos nos están cobrando la renta, es posible que también ellos puedan darnos buen servicio a nosotros. Entonces este, la otra cosa es de que queremos también de los parqueos, que también hablen de eso. Así de que quiero que los ayuden, los ayuden en lo que puedan. Así de que eso es todo lo que les quería decir y les agradezco muchísimo y que Dios me los bendiga grandemente.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Ada Merlos and I've lived in the city of Mount Rainier for nineteen years at 3263 Queenstown Drive, apartment 101. We've had a long life in this city and we've been living here year to year through increases. This last year it was eighty dollars, we pay one thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars. We have been here for rent increases during the entire time. We are here to ask you to help pass the law as soon as possible. We know we are entering another year, another year of increases. We ask that the rent stabilization law passes now because our incomes aren't able to pay for us to continue to live here. We are grateful to all of you and grateful for listening to our concerns. The rent increase isn't the only increase that we're seeing. Now we have a new trash fee that has been increasing. Our water fee has been going up. If we are paying all of these increases, we would expect better maintenance, but our maintenance hasn't gotten better. So what we are asking is for you to listen to all of these concerns. And one other concern is parking. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you so much. So Melissa and Kamali, can you please make a note when it comes to a code in the laundry inspections? Because there's like an overflow of water and when they go and that's not being fixed, okay? Do we have anybody else, Trent, on your end? Okay. Thank you so much. I'll say it in English and I'll say it in Spanish because we do have a couple more speakers. So, that was Spanish. So, I definitely, quiero darles las gracias por estar aquí y yo sé que ha sido una lucha larga y están aquí todos escuchándolos. Todos estamos trabajando en conjunto para poder pasar esto. Eso quiero que, que lo sepan, que se está trabajando en conjunto en pasar esta, esta, esta ley. Y les agradecemos por estar aquí y que sigan luchando para asegurarse que, que pase, okay? So I said, thank you so much for being here and spending all this time with us for quite a bit of months. And we're all collectively working hard at passing this. And we're happy to have you here and that you have joined us. Okay? So Ryan Washington, I'll give the floor to you. And how do you call it? And then I'll go down the list because, thank you so much for putting, for putting yourself on hold while like we get through the whole, to rest of the residents and there's a couple more coming. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much, mayor Beneta, Benita, sorry. I think you remember as a council, I know it's been a long day for everyone, so I will keep my comments very, very brief. For the record, my name is Ryan Washington. I'm with the Apartment Office Building Association, commonly known as AOB for short. I just, I know the council's already had their minds on how they're going to vote tonight. But I just wanted just to highlight a few things that were addressed last meeting regarding the Minnesota study stating that, you know, rent stabilization would deter new construction. And just kind of pivot to just the effects of St. Paul in regards to them seeing a lack of new construction in months within the bill rent stabilization referendum passing. They had a total of two thousand one hundred and forty housing permits and by April 2022, number decreased to drastically decreased to six hundred and eighty-two, which is approximately eighty-four percent. There have been studies, you know, reported by not only economists but just the Montgomery County Council of the Office of Legislative Oversight has even stated that this is a negative economic consequence enacting rent control or rent stabilization policies. The National Association of Home Builders and National Multifamily Housing Council reported eighty-seven point, eighty-seven point five developers wouldn't want to develop in rent-controlled jurisdictions or rent-controlled areas. So the numbers and the facts show for itself. Montgomery County tried to enact it twice back in the eighties and failed both times and saw drastic decreases in new construction. DC back in the seventies saw a decrease in permits and they had to go back and revise their policies to make it more, to exempt buildings built after 1975. So the facts are there, you know, there's case studies everywhere in different cities and municipalities of rent control not working. College Park tried to enact a rent control for single-family properties for the fact of deterring construction of and to deter and to reduce the number of single-family rental units in within the municipality. And I just say that all to say, this with cities, the intent of the bill is very noble and I appreciate, you know, members of the council trying to resolve this issue, but rent stabilization is not the answer. And I just turn it to, the county council is working on a temporary measure and is working on a more longer-term permanent solution that we're contributing to conversations. And I know there's been discussions on the exemptions. The council is currently considering the five years, so in your discussions, I just want you all just to be cognizant of that and how some of the policies that you're trying to enact in this bill may overlap with what's going to be incorporated on the county level as well as conversations continue on this bill. But I'll state for any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. There was something I did ask you last meeting and you said you were going to bring it back, Ryan. What apartment complex does AOB represent in the city of Mount Rainier?
I didn't see any on our database. I didn't see, I didn't catch any apartment communities in our database. I think you only have three large apartment communities, if I'm not mistaken, and that's the Queen Manor, K Wood Management. I didn't see.
Yeah, the reason why I asked, because it's like you had mentioned previously that your clients had called you concerned from the city of Mount Rainier. So I wanted to clarify who they were. But if there's none, definitely I think that's a good, you know, it's good information to point out. The other thing is like you mentioned, the county council doing a five-year exemption. So I want to make sure to emphasize that for the council as well, because that's what the county is thinking of. All right, so I'm going to open up the floor to any more residents that have something to say. I know Casa is here and we also have Tone, Tones. And we have a comment from a resident on Facebook. So I'm going to go to people that are here and then I'm going to go to a comment from Facebook and then I'm going to open it up as well when it comes to anybody potentially in the phone that cannot type on the chat. Okay, so Trent, I know you're here. Talk to Casa, go ahead.
No, yeah, look, I can just share that we completely dispute what Ryan has just shared. I just shared two reports in the chat that show actually housing production numbers from 2007 to 2013 in six cities in California that had rent control produced more housing. There's a University of Minnesota report that I also just included in the chat that shows actually, when you look at the empirical data, not the fear-based threatening that we believe that landlords want to... want to express because of the loss of their capabilities to increase the amount of rent as they want without any regulation. But if you look at this empirical data from the University of Minnesota report, it also shows that there was actually no effect on actual development. So those are just two studies that you guys can take a look at. I just wanted to share that. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Trent and Casa. As well, I know there were letters have been provided to us with all that information as well. Council, they are available if you need to talk to them for more information as well. All right, so we do have, let me look at the list. Tone, is that, is that you, Tony, or is it somebody else? Because I'm now just gonna read your comment after.
It's me.
Tony, you're showing up everywhere.
Tony George, it's me.
I'm gonna go ahead.
I posted on Facebook before I switched over to this.
So I'm gonna open the floor to you, so that way you can make your comment and anything you have to say. Go ahead, the first here for three minutes.
Okay, thank you to Mayor and Council for taking up this rent stabilization issue. It's very important. I'm personally impacted by it as a renter at the Mount Rainier Artist's Law. Thank you, Mayor, for hosting the meeting and being active with the Prince George's County Housing Justice Coalition meeting this past weekend, which was very productive and very, very informing. I had a couple of questions in terms of the fifteen-year exemption or the exemption for properties that are less than fifteen years. Can that time be lowered? Fifteen years seems like a long time if it's related to property becoming profitable or economically viable. The fifteen-year time period seems seems long. My other comment would be, we at the Artist's Labs have already, during the midst of a pandemic, got hit with a ten percent rent increase. Is there any provision, depending on when a rent increase happened, to make this retroactive or have the property being in compliance with the new law? And how are you going to enforce this with landlords?
Okay, thank you so much. So before you answer, let me ask the council to add another another ten minutes because our city clerk has alerted us that we have run out of time. So council, can I have ten more minutes on the clock?
So moved.
It's probably moving second. Any discussion, abstention, objection, hearing, and none? We have been, we're gonna go ahead and add like ten, ten minutes from right now, Melissa. I know you're like docking me my extra minutes, okay? Who, okay, so is there any other speaker that wishes to speak on this subject? Please let me know. So that way, we call on you. If you're on the phone, you know, you can mute yourself and give me your name, your name, last name, block number, and street number, please. Okay, I hear nobody in the phone. Jared, is there anybody else on on Facebook?
No comments on Facebook.
Anybody on Facebook?
Oh, no, no comments.
Okay, so Tony, to answer one of the many questions. Is the fifteen was something that we put there, right? Can it, can it go down? We heard like, you know, the county's doing five, I've heard. And that's something to consider once they pass it because they are having a hearing, right? They're just moving along. You know, we will fall under theirs. However, we have as a city, we have the empowerment to be able to pass our own laws, and this is one of the ones that we can pass. So therefore, want to make sure that it is in place. And then the county will decide what they decide, but in the meantime, we'll go ahead and take care of it, okay? All right, so Jimmy, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Just in response, I mean, reality is we're a small town, small city. We know where developments that hasn't been any new apartment complexes, you know, for the last twenty years, we could say five or ten. I think we just want to make sure we don't discourage new people from coming in. And so I think it says really it really doesn't really matter whether it's five, ten, or fifteen, you know, the major apartment complexes, the most recent one, you know, really was the the Artist's Labs. And so, and that's like now eighteen years, I mean, about seventeen years old. So, I mean, I think the numbers doesn't really mean that much because we're not doing a big city. I do think we need to ask the attorney a question about how the county law affects us, whether this law just affects us and whether all, I think our law, you know, supersedes the county law, but I think we should just ask the county, our attorney, just to make sure.
Yeah, the county will supersede us. We could also, as there's this emergency, we could also postpone portions of it. Like we could start working on this as an example, they passed a right at three percent cap. We just, you know, but in the meantime, we could work on on the registry and everything else. So it's two different, it's two different portions of it, like they are now requiring a registry, just like a rent stabilization for a three percent for 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 that timeframe. But we definitely could end that time, like, you know, work on the registry and everything else that we need to do to get it working because that's something ours has. And in case like the county like requires that, then we're like, we're ahead of time. So we should be.
I would ask like a legal opinion because there are lots of laws we have which county, you know, doesn't, you know, or stronger than what the county has. So maybe we should set this. I mean, you may be, I'm sure you're right. I just want to confirm it.
That's fine. Okay, anybody else from council and Tony, the other part, hold on, the other, the other part of your, your question? Luke, are you gonna address the other part or do you want me to say something?
About the, 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 how do we hold the landlords accountable and sort of enforce it? There's a, there's a registry that everybody's gonna have to apply through, Tony. That's part of what the mayor read earlier tonight. That's something new we added. And then there is a penalty for, I think it's like five hundred dollars for a first fine, a thousand dollars after that for the next fine that we would employ on the on the landlord if they did not agree to this.
Thank you. Just wanted to add Ryan did update to say that.
Yeah, Tony, I did side. I'm gonna go ahead and address it, but I have to keep everybody at three minutes. If not, this is gonna like open up completely. So he said he represents a couple of the apartments. I'll go ahead and read them through. But the other part, we'll go ahead and like reach out to legal to figure out if there's any recourse for Brenda's or even institute to be able to answer your question, okay?
I just, I'm sorry, just with.
So if it's about you, yes, but if it's about the comment in the chat, no.
If it's about me?
If it's, if it's something you need to add, it's fine. I'll address the comment on the chat, but it has to be too separate, but you get three minutes and and that's it. So that's why if you want to wrap up your sentence, that's fine, but not address.
Yeah, that's all I want to do because you've already addressed what was in the chat. So you don't, you don't even have to go back to that. My, my only comment would be just in terms of hearing more from residents at Queen Town, Queenstown, K Wood Gardens and Queen's Manor, given that we have this large rental population. I'm grateful for the people that have stepped up and you know, been at the last few meetings and test, you know, I gave gave statements. But I think I don't want to exclude a population or, you know, some individuals may maybe haven't heard about it or are affected, are affected by it, but haven't, haven't really heard and had an opportunity to speak about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. If you know any of them, please invite them to the future meetings, but if we could continue, if we continue having conversations about this, this will become a year-long process and that's why we're also, I'm not there to to do that neither. So if you have anybody that has and that you know in the other apartments, please reach out to them and invite them to the meetings. We'd definitely love to hear their voices, even if they're in the meeting, have them send us an email about how they feel about this. We'll be there to to take all this information, okay? Thank you so much. All right, so council members, I'm gonna open up the floor to you. I know, Luke, you had your hand up. I apologize. I put you on the spot, but go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I would just say, I just, I think there's a couple things in here that I think would be helpful if we cleaned up. I think we're all supportive of this. I don't want to speak for everyone. But I think it would be helpful to just clean up a couple things with that year and the highlights and then make sure it's ready to go for a clean, clean vote. We could just add a legislative session to the, to the work session in two weeks and get this into law with a really good piece of ordinance. That would be my recommendation to the group, but obviously everyone defer to everyone else and how they want to move. Thanks.
So I will take that recommendation so that way it doesn't looks like a Christmas tree highlighted, right? Clean it up a little bit and obviously, you know, if you have a comment on this, you're welcome to always like email us at council@mountrainiermd.org. I will take that, you know, like I said, like, you know, we're, we're down to it. Two weeks, we do, Melissa, make sure there's a legislation section added to the work session so that we could like review, but this is definitely like the third for reading. So we are, we are good when it comes to how many of how many readings we have, we have on this, okay? So I'm gonna open the floor. I heard Luke, I heard Jimmy, one at anything, Jared and Valerie, okay? Jimmy?
No more.
Thank you, Jared.
Yep, I'm in line with Luke. Thanks.
Okay, good job, Valerie.
Yeah, thank you for everybody who spoke tonight. I think it's really important to hear from you and I really look forward to working through this more. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So Melissa, go ahead and add a legislative session to our work session so that we could take care of it in two weeks and and we will have, we will work, Luke, if you want, we'll work on it, create a document and finalize the last little dots and stuff like that. We'll share with the committee and then like obviously send to legal so that way we could fine tune it and have the cleanest copy we can have in front of us, okay? Melissa, we're good. You, all right, thank you guys. Thumbs up if you guys are ready to, we're agreement. Araya said yes.
I would, I would just, I'm sorry to, I would just have maybe Luke and Selena give comments and propose it and bring it so it's announced. I'm a little concerned about having something discussed at a work session and immediately voting at a legislative session the same day without giving people's notice. So maybe Luke and Selena as a committee could kind of work it out and then, you know, bring it to legislative session. I'm not sure you can.
So.
I think. You could have the legislative session before the work session. Sometimes we've done that to do the vote beforehand.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, okay, but I mean, I think you have to have it done before the legislative session, if I'm saying.
That's what we're saying. So me and Luke will go ahead and clean it up with legal. And once we're done cleaning it up, we'll share with you guys. So that will go to the, if you have any feedback from the, from what we turn in, send it, send it to legal so that way we could fine tune it, but you should have a clean document before the meeting. That's what we're aiming at. So that way it's ready to vote, okay?
Sounds good.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much. Muchas gracias por venir. Vamos a tener una reunión en dos semanas. Vamos a tener una reunión legislativa para votar y nuestra reunión regular para la, para la reunión de trabajo, okay? Así que los vemos en dos semanas para, para la reunión legislativa para poder votar definitivamente ya en esta en este documento. So I said like, we'll see you guys in two weeks and we're doing a legislative session to be able to finalize the vote on this, okay? Yes, okay. All right, muchas gracias. Okay, let me move on to the next item. And if there's something here that you want me to speed go through it, please, like, let me know if there's anything else you need to delete out of this list. Okay, so second reading and adoption of ordinance number eleven oh two, amending the code of ordinance to the city of Mount Rainier, chapter one, the ethics to incorporate changes required by state law to local ethics ordinance regarding conflict of interest and financial disclosure and up-to-date reference to state law. Basically, it's updating our code to reflect state law as it reads. This is the second reading and stuff for vote. Counsel, I am gonna have a motion to approve this one and open it up for discussion. And if you have none, we're going for vote, okay? So motion to approve ordinance, Melissa, you moved it. He, where, yeah, sorry, thank you. Orness eleven dash twenty twenty-two. Oh, thank you so much. Is we probably moved in second. Any discussions? Also, if there's no discussion, we'll move into vote. We have reviewed this document and work sessions multiple and legislative to be able to meet our requirement. We're good? Thumbs up? Okay, so any abstentions? Objections, hearing none. Orness eleven dash twenty-two has passed by unanimous vote. So Melissa, make sure that this is, this is sent to our legal team, Melissa. So that way she's aware it's passed and we are, we're up to date with this portion that we need to do, okay? Moving on to the next item. Discussion on the letter of support to the Gateway CDC Studio Lab project. The mayor and council will discuss the letter of support to Gateway CDC Studio Lab project. As you guys recalled, quite, quite a few months back, we had a presentation from Gateway CDC about their proposal to have the various cities working together and, you know, supporting each other, right? When it comes to Tuanez, you see the letter in front of you. So basically, what they're doing is in this section, they're gonna ask letters of support from the Gateway CDC cities, North Brandon, Brimwood and ourselves in order to support the ask for three hundred thousand, I believe it's there. So you'll read, I'll read the letter pretty quickly and then if we move, I mean, you know, this is more of a notice, move to approve them, we'll put a letterhead and sign it and send it out, okay? Letter support for the studio says Mr. Palace with the Gateway District of Pre-Georgia County and continued membership of the Board of Gateway CDC. The city of Mount Rainier has to clear histories to be in support for local artists and culture sector. The arts are powerful resource and revitalization and provide physical, social, cultural, economic benefits to Gateway community to have a magnificent creative community. That's called at home for work for a long time. As this culture has developed, it has attracted real estate investors and business growth along Route One corridor. We recognize artists and their vibrant credit culture as the key reason our gateway communities flourish. We support the storeship trust for the uncommon design and inventive ownership studio lab initiative in partnership with Gateway Community Development Corporation. This collaboration initiative will work across municipalities, disciplines and organizations to foster and initiate incentive strategies for artists and stakeholders' ownership and investments and cultural sector program proving. So this letter will be going to the Senator Augustine and our delegation from the forty-seventh, so that way they could propose a grant in unity to create funds for for studios for Studios Lab. And thank you, hold on, thank you, Valerie, for for putting, presenting this to us as our liaison to the Gateway CDC. Go ahead, Jimmy.
Nothing wrong with the letter, just to let you know that they already have proposed a three hundred thousand dollar grant as a, as a bond bill. It's been introduced. So so I mean, we should do a letter, but that, that was actually done.
I think they wanted to do it more of like a sense of unity that we're behind it a hundred percent, but thank you for putting that up.
Just a piece of information. That's fine.
No, thank you so much for updating us on that. It is very helpful, Jimmy. Luke, Jared, Valerie, anything else to add? Nope, Jared, you're good. Thumbs up. Valerie, anything else? Are we good?
Um, no, I think I just thank you for adding this to the agenda at the last minute. I definitely support this. The Gateway CDC is growing and changing and building out and I think that's really important. So I'm excited to see more of what they're doing. And I did talk with them today and this bond bill doesn't include a match, so that's good news for them because it will give them so many. Thank you.
So thank you for that, counsel. Can we move forward with a vote?
So moved.
Again.
Okay, we were in discussions, so I just want to go. Any objections, abstentions? Hearing none unanimously, this letter will be sent. So Melissa, put in letterhead. Valerie, let us know who else to address it. I think it was like Augustine in the forty-seventh district, right? Julian, Neil, and who else?
Yeah, and with a copy to each municipality, yeah.
Okay, perfect. So Melissa, I'll tie up the loose ends for this. If you could put a letterhead, we'll take care of it and send it out.
Actually, the letter should go to the chairman of the appropriations committee. I mean, they're supporting it, so I mean, but that's who it should go to.
So how about to the chair and then we see the rest of the people that we mentioned.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. No, thank you, Jimmy. Your, your, your delegate, your delegate wisdom comes in handy. And I know I always run into you every time I go to Annapolis. All right, perfect. Thank you. And I know I always run into you every time I go to Annapolis. All right. Perfect. Thank you so much. So, um, next item on the agenda. Okay, discuss, oh my goodness, I feel so sorry, Judy. Discussion involved on the appointment of the tree commissioner of the mayor and council will discuss and what appointment Judy Alba to the tree commission. I, I think that based on an early conversation, we already, um, have a part of the team. This is more of a formality. So that will, we keep record of this, but, um, can I have a motion on the floor to approve the appointment of Judy Albert to the tree commission?
Move to approve, um, Judy Albert to the tree commission.
Second. Seconded.
Is it probably moved in second? Any discussion? Um, hearing, hearing none. Uh, Judy, you have unanimously been approved to the tree commission. Thank you for staying with us. We wanted to find an excuse to have you hang out with us a little longer. Okay?
Thank you, Luke. Thank you very much.
Have a good night and thank you for volunteering, not just for the tree commission. I know you have done a lot of work in other committees and you're a very active member of our community. So thank you so much for that as well. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, Judy.
Good night.
All right. So, uh, let me see. First reading of ordinance oh one twenty twenty three, ordinance of the council city of Mariner, Maryland granting renewal of cable franchise to Comcast of Maryland LLC and authorizing a franchise agreement. This is something that we do every about ten years or so. So this will be, um, in tune with that. Can you put it on the, on the, on the, on the, on the screen, please? I'm just getting late. I'm getting you guys there. Okay? I promise. No more than ten thirty. All right. So, uh, Jimmy, um, you wanna just give a brief summary?
Yeah, could I, could I do, uh, uh, screen save of the chair? Melissa?
Yeah, you can. Go ahead.
I can't. Uh, anyway, just, I just wanna mention that this is basically, we gave the, uh, Verizon and now this term Comcast the ability to go into our community and to use our right of way, which belonged to the city. In response, this is continuing, just so people know, uh, we get a, a, a fee of five percent that goes into the, our budget. I'm pretty sure, uh, PEG is a kind of the, uh, the kind of F, ethernet thing. And we also get, uh, a, a channel, uh, and CNET is another thing. So I just wanted to mention, uh, that, uh, that the reason we, reason we do this is we, they have an agreement to go, they're not allowed just to come into our town and, and wire our services. They have to pay us a fee and this basically continues the fee they're paying us and agrees us that where they can continue to, you know, uh, connect our homes and use our right of way. That's all. I just, not everyone may know the history of that.
No, thank you. That's the reason why I pitched it to you because I know you have worked in, uh, in this before. Uh, so we have a clear understanding what it is. Um, the C, CNET, the INET, uh, did meet. You know, I, I, I do attend those, the, the, that meeting. And I did forward all of you guys like the budget for this year. So that was included in our budget. Our, our CM and finance was also included on it. But, um, it's an agreement between the multiple municipalities that, um, basically came together and say, this is what it is. And, um, and it went through. All right. So counsel, you have this in front of you. Um, scroll through it, uh, Melissa. Oh, uh, let me, how big is this document, Melissa?
I, I think you're, I'm sure you've dealt with it the last time we talked about. So I think this time we can.
No, that's what I was, so like, I was going through it, uh, put it down, Melissa. So, um, so the warehouse, we already read in the work session. This is, uh, we're actually writing the work session and right now for the first reading, right? But, um, it's basically the same exact document. It basically says it authorized for us to be able to sign this agreement. Right? Um, and that's the essence of it. Okay? Counsel, do you guys have any questions regarding this? Um, you do have somebody that's an expert in this field. Jimmy here with us? Jimmy, Jimmy. All right. Luke, Valerie, Jared, we're good?
Good. Thank you.
You moved that, um, you moved to a different position, Jim. Uh, Luke tells like, where are you? Okay. All right. So we're, we're good. It is the first reading. It'll be up for like second reading on it. Um, uh, Kamali, uh, can you and Jimmy, can you double check by when this has to be signed? I think we had, we do this in enough time where for our March work session, we, I mean, for our March legislative session, we could approve without problem and still submitted with plenty of time. So I think they do a profound mistake. And so let's make sure that, um, that this is added to the next agenda. So that was voted. Okay? All right. Moving on to the next one, introduction of the first reading of ordinance oh two twenty twenty three. Budget amendment that council introduced and have the first reading of ordinance oh two dash twenty twenty three budget amendment number two. Can you put it on the screen, please? Okay, there you go. Authorizing a movement of funds in the fiscal year twenty twenty three budget between like items. Um, the city of Mariner budget for fiscal year, um, FY twenty three was adopted by ordinance oh four dash twenty twenty two in May twenty twenty two. Whereas has been deemed necessary to transfer fund between line items to meet meet current, uh, make sure you space that out, meet current demands for goods and services. Okay? So that's anything I'm gonna ask, like, and therefore be it obtained the mayor and council, the city of Mariner, Maryland. That the following transfers of funds between appropriate appropriation shall be made to the fiscal year twenty twenty three budget of the city of Mariner, Maryland. Um, go ahead and move it up. Um, not too high. Police, I said, police, police vehicles. Best revenue, um, from line item oh one dash forty three oh three. Uh, you guys don't have to put all those extra zeros. Um, state police aid, a hundred and thirty one thousand. I can't even see periods anymore. Okay? Um, from a line item oh one dash forty six oh six, insurance damage recovery, fifty six thousand for line item oh one dash forty six oh four, sales of police property, eleven thousand with a total revenue modification of a hundred ninety eight thousand. The expenses oh one dash fifty seven oh five point oh seventy one vehicle purchase, department police, uh, department vehicle oh one seventy one, hundred sixty five, sixty one thousand. Oh, one five five nine eight point oh ninety nine contingency, um, uh, department other thirty seven thousand. Total spend modification, a hundred ninety eight thousand. Okay, put it all the way down. I said net change grant matching oh one dash forty seven ninety nine, use of fund balance of M D I F a hundred thousand, total revenue modifications, a hundred thousand, expenses of oh one fifty seven oh one point oh forty one. Um, can you guys just add the worst line item that will help me? So that way the residents also understand what it is. If not, they, I don't think there's a knowledge of what this is. A grant matching expense of a hundred thousand, total modification for a hundred thousand. Next change, it says zero on it. Okay? Hold on right there. Grants revenue oh one dash forty seven grand revenue, DHDC zero zero one ninety seven, five thousand dollar economy development, oh one forty seven grand revenue. Um, question is, uh, Kamali or, or what's it called, Ron Wilson, whichever of you guys or both. Are you guys just listing the grants for us to activate him in the second part? Is that what it is before I start reading them?
Ron, there, if you allow Ron to.
Sure. Yeah. What, what we're doing is, um, we're adding grants to the budget that, um, were not added originally. Largely because we didn't know, or they didn't exist at the time that we did the budget in the spring. So in order to be able to spend the money for the grants, we have to do the budget modification.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to have clarity because I did recognize what the, what, what they were. So I wanted to make sure it's, it's also know why we're reading all these things. All right. So you guys got it. You guys heard clearly this are, uh, grants that are teams that work really hard and getting, but they have to be added to the budget. And this came in after the budget got approved on May twenty twenty two. That's what they're being added now.
Yeah.
Um, okay. So, um, oh one dash forty seven zero 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 twenty four. Can, can you guys come up with a different method? This is a lot of worry. Okay. Grand revenue DHDC, uh, zero zero two seven zero, five thousand dollars. Economic development, zero one dash forty seven zero 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 nineteen. Grand revenue DHDC tag twenty five thousand econ development, oh one dash forty one. That's four, five, six, seven, eight. Um, hold on. That is three, four, five, six, seven, seven, zero, sixteen. Grand revenue level up two thousand dollars economic development. Oh, one dash forty seven, seven zeros, fourteen, grand revenue, uh, CDGB forty seven, forty three thousand, six hundred and sixty three economic development. Oh, one dash forty seven, followed by seven zeros, seventeen, grand revenue CB, CBT one eight nine nine nine, a hundred and forty two thousand, four hundred and forty one public works. Forty one dash forty seven, seven zeros following, uh, and then the number eighteen. Grand revenue CBT twenty two sixty two for a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty public work state of, uh, Maryland capital grant. Oh, one dash forty seven, um, seven zeros point, uh, seven zeros point twenty, grand revenue green streets, uh, five hundred thousand. Oh, and that looks like it says state of Maryland capital grant. Oops, sorry. So what was public works? It was state of capital gram and it's a program. Okay. Forty seven, oh one forty seven, seven zeros, point twenty five, grand revenue welcome center, two hundred and fifty thousand. That is a grand forty one, uh, dash forty seven, seven zeros, point twenty eight. Um, there you go. Grand revenue, community garden. Community garden grant for ten thousand dollars by Pepco. From Pepco, from Pepco and sustainable Maryland. Okay. Make sure we add that in there because they're, they're the, it's a unity, a partnership unity. Oh, one forty seven, seven zeros, twenty six. Hmm. That's grand revenue, community grand program. So do me a favor, guys. Can you guys make sure they line up? Because they're, they're, they're not lining up across. Okay. For the next, uh, for the next time we read this. Okay? Fifteen thousand police department or revenue modifications of one point two nine six point three five four million dollars. Okay. And this, okay, grand expenses. Okay. One dash five eight ninety nine point oh forty one point zero zero twenty three, grand expense of DHDC oh oh one twenty one ninety four for fifty thousand, oh one dash fifty eight ninety nine point oh forty one point zero zero point twenty four, grand expense. DHCD zero zero two seven zero five thousand, oh one dash fifty eight ninety nine point oh one all forty one point zero zero point nineteen, grand expense DHDC tag twenty five thousand. Oh, one dash five eight 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 point oh forty one point oh oh one six, grand expense level up two thousand. Oh, one dash five eight ninety nine point oh one point zero zero point fourteen, grand expense. CDBG forty seven, fifty three thousand, six hundred and sixty six. Oh, one dash fifty seven, zero zero point oh eight oh point oh oh one seventeen, grand expense CDB, CBT one eight nine nine nine, a hundred and forty two thousand, four hundred and forty one. Oh, one dash fifty seven zero zero point oh eighty point oh oh eighteen, grand expense CBT twenty two six two a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty. Oh, one dash fifty seven point zero thirty one point zero zero point twenty, grand expense streets. Five hundred and thirty thousand. Um, oh, one dash fifty seven oh one dash oh thirty one zero 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 zero, past hall redevelopment, two hundred and fifty thousand. Oh, one fifty eight ninety nine point oh thirty one point oh point ninety eight, grand expense community garden, ten thousand. Um, oh, one dash five five oof. Five five fourteen point oh seventy one points, zero zero point twenty six, grand expense public safety night. Five thousand, oh, one dash five five fifteen point oh seventy one point zero zero point twenty six, grand expense police explorer, five thousand. Oh, one dash five five one six point oh seven one point zero zero point twenty six. Grand expense community outreach, five thousand for a sum of one point two ninety six point three five four million dollars. Revenue modifications, none. Expenses. So, uh, before I continue, is there a reason why there's so many numbers attached and we cannot make them smaller? Ron?
Um, yeah, that's the way that our, that our general ledger is organized. We, we have a five segment code, uh, for our GL numbers. Where the first segment is the funds number. We, we now only have one fund. Uh, the, the left segment is the account description. So fifty two oh four, for instance, means police supplies. The, uh, three digits after that refer to the department. Uh, the two digits after that refer to a program. We don't use it much, but every once in a while it is used. And the last two digit segment, um, refers to grants. So each grant has a unique identifier and that's how we keep track of things.
Um, so for you, when it's put in the budget, are all those numbers added or they have a line item for the budget?
Well, uh, it, it, it's a change that I wanted to make by having the full account number there because it has created some confusion in the past.
Uh, maybe cross-reference them because if we're gonna have to read line item by line item of the budget with like seven digits is gonna be a long process. Okay. So let, let me, let me go through them. I'm still almost done. Dispatch services. So oh one dash fifty four oh four point oh seventy one point zero zero point zero zero dispatch services. Twenty dash twenty thousand, nine hundred and ninety. Oh, one dash fifty two oh four point oh seventy one point zero zero point zero zero, police supplies and equipment, twenty nine thousand, one hundred. Um, oh, one dash fifty five ninety eight point oh ninety nine point zero zero point zero zero contingency. Um, there's a parenthesis, fifty thousand, um, and ninety is there, is that negative balance or what is it? Um?
Yeah, that, that's a reduction in the budget for that line item.
Okay.
Um, to pay for the two previous items.
Okay.
So that's why the, it nets to zero when, when you look at the total expense modification.
Thank you so much. I, I wanna, yeah, that was the next question. Um, how many more pages will have to read in for the next one? Finance, you're reading this pages because there's no way I'm reading all these numbers on my own.
No, you're, you're at the, you're at the last section.
Still, it is ten thirty and almost ten thirty. All right. That's what I said. Usually we do like, it's easier numbers for the community to put on, like, you know, whatever the line item is gonna be long and then you could match it up like internally with the other number. Okay. All right. Borrowing and debt service, oh, one dash forty six ninety point zero 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 point zero zero point zero zero. Other finance revenue, uh, that's two million dollars and that is, um, that is something that has been, um, approved by console previously regarding, um, pots house. I don't want you guys to like get thrown off that this is something additional to what we already approved. All right. Expenses, oh, one dash fifty seven oh one dash oh thirty one dash four zeros following, pot hall redevelopment, two million, um, oh, one dash fifty eight seventeen point oh ninety nine point zero zero point zero zero bonds. A bond spot halt interest thirty two thousand, seven hundred. Oh, one dash fifty eight eighteen point oh ninety nine point zero zero point zero zero bonds. Pot's hall principal, eighty five thousand, three hundred and forty eight. Oh, one dash fifty five ninety eight point zero nine nine point zero zero point zero zero contingency. Um, with, uh, dev of, um, with a negative balance, a negative, um, a subtraction of a hundred and eighteen thousand oh forty eight. Um, total expense modifications, two million. I thought you told me I was down on the last page, Ron. All right.
Um, yeah.
You are a finisher and this is just a signature.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, um, mayor and council, do you guys have any questions regarding, um, regarding anything? Basically it is, uh, moving funds to be able to pay for our vehicles that we had, um, had a discussion. I think a couple of discussions, uh, before in front of mayor and council. The other one is to like bring all of our grants, um, yeah, to add into the budget. Uh, to be able to utilize them. Um, as you can tell, like the staff, um, we have all have been very busy on working on getting grants. Um, and that's the reason why there's a big line and also, um, to include, um, the two million that, um, we, um, borrow from, we lease from the bank, um, to work on pot hall. Um, Ron, did I miss anything in this brief summary and the detailed summary that I made?
Um, no, no, you're good.
Yes, mayor, mayor, please.
Kamali.
It was the hundred thousand dollars that we're getting for the facade improvement and bringing it from the reserve.
Oh, right, right, right. The, the grant matching. That's the grant matching.
Thank you so much for that, for adding that one, um. I, I think that when it's this big, guys, um, you might have to wanna put like little describers in the bottom. Because, um, it's, it's a lot and you need to make, we need to make sure that if we are asked by the community, um. We get to reflect what it is, yeah, highlight it a little bit bigger so we could see it, put like description or something because with all these numbers it blends in. All right, thank you for adding that. Okay, so. Um, question before I move on to, um, to, to you guys. I'm gonna have to eventually do finance followed by Vice Mayor to read all these numbers next time. Uh, the contingency, I noticed like money was deducted from it. Uh, what does that leave our contingency to?
Uh, 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 Mayor, I'm sorry, I, I will have to calculate that up and get back to you. Um, it, it's still going to be, uh, above a hundred thousand.
Okay, so can you move it to where the lies, where the contingency is at? So, uh, what I'm gonna ask for future reference, if money is being moved from one item from the budget, not grand. You know, one is for you to give me the balance of what, how much money is left in that line item. So that we are aware of it, especially with contingency, okay?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you so much. All right, Council, I'm gonna open it up to you. I, I think you guys heard a very great summary description, but if you have any questions, the floor is yours. We're gonna start with Jimmy, Valerie, Luke and Jared.
Nothing.
Valerie.
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, so I think I'm a little bit confused about one thing, like a few of these items. For example, the, um, C B T Trust Grant eighteen nine nine nine, that is actually. It is actually in the approved budget, um, under grants revenue. Um, so is this, I don't, I don't quite understand because it is in the budget, isn't it? Thing that we were gonna get, so I'm not sure why we're putting that in.
Um.
Now with all these accounts.
Yeah, yeah, I, um. Can I get back to you on that? Um, because a, as I was analyzing what, what was in the budget. Um, the C B T eighteen ninety-nine nine appeared to not be in it. Um, even though that particular grant has existed for a couple of years. Um. Uh, I think that our thinking last spring was that it would be completed in fiscal twenty-two. And, and it was not. And, and that's why. I believe that it wasn't in the, in, in the budget for fiscal twenty-three, but I will double check that and get back to you.
Yeah, I would, I would appreciate that. I think we should definitely look through all this because I had my, my little budget book out earlier and I was looking at it and that, that number definitely isn't there. So I definitely wanna check into that and as well as others, I think Memorial Park, for example, the five hundred thirty thousand dollars, I felt some of that was in there, um, already, but I could be wrong. Thank you.
Yeah, what, what I can do is I can give you a whole list of the grants that are in the fiscal twenty-three budget.
Okay.
All right.
Um, right now I have, um, I have two hundred, three hundred thousand for Oriole Park, Police Basement, three hundred thousand, you know, things like that. So I just wanna make sure that we're not, you know, putting an amendment through or, or, you know.
Right, right, of course, yeah, we, we, we wanna make sure that we're not double counting things.
Yes.
Hmm.
Valerie, anything else or you're, you're good for right now?
I'm good for right now. I'll go through this and look through it.
Thank you, thank you so much, um. Luke?
No, I appreciate those questions from Valerie. Those are good questions. Just wanna make sure before we vote on this, we get those answers and everything sort of squared away. Thanks.
Sure.
Jared?
Uh, no, no additional questions.
Um, so I, I think we need to answer those questions before we move on on this. Uh, the other thing I've definitely was, I. Which is the line item that has the speed camera funding on it? If any of it is here, is anything being pulled out?
There's, there's no budget amendment for the speed camera revenue.
So can we make sure we include, especially if we receive it, um, if it's gone already above what it needs to be, can you guys do a check? Um, and send it to Council, comparison of what we budgeted for it and if anything has gone over. So that was included because, um, there's limitations on what that money could be used. And I'd rather utilize, you know, that money to take care of like some of the. Some of the police need because if it falls straight onto safety, like I will hate to return any money. So, um, but there was also one more grand that wasn't the sheet, I think it's the, the SAB. SAB grand, it said on this list, I, I mean, I read it, but at this point, like my head is hurting so much. It's if the SAB grand is not here, um, if we are receiving, let's make sure it's added to it because that is a grand that, um. We have to apply yearly, it's not granted to us like, you know, the address as well, so if it's not, it's not gonna be able to be used. So if.
So, so Mayor, if I could, um, yeah, yes, this, the state police aid or the SAB, it is in, in legal. Form a grant. Um, however, our, our accounting has never separated it out as a grant. It is just treated it as a, another form of revenue. Um, because, uh, it pays for expenses that we're already incurring. Uh, so that is the line item, state police aid. That's in the, it's the very first line of, of this budget, um, modification. The, the line forty-three oh three state police aid for a hundred and thirty-one, that's the increase that you're talking about.
So, um, can you guys put a parenthesis of what it is so that we know what else is recognized up because definitely did not ring a bell just naming it like that. And the other thing regarding the stop, so even if it's been done that in the past. I definitely would like to see it in grants because if we don't apply for it, we don't get it and I don't want us to take it for granted, um, and then we're like under budgeting because, um. We, uh, of course, our team is always gonna apply for it, but it's somebody that's not guaranteed, they could easily say no. And that would throw like that, that line item completely off. Okay? All right, so, um, bring back with like the various questions we have, Valerie, if you have anything else, please make sure you submit it, Council, go through it to figure out if there's anything else that we're missing and. Obviously, our department has the same thing. If you see, if there's a grand that is not there that we have like. Missed, not guarding, or we projected to get, let's make a note of it for the contingency, same thing. Um, if we could utilize some of the like, uh, speed camera, um, funding. Um, it'll be ideal. Um, and figure out also if there's anywhere in the budget of money that has not been used. Um, and, you know, and it's past its time, right? That it will no longer be used for the next few months, um, to consider also, um. To utilize before we've even touched the contingency, all right? So can you move it up, uh, to the heading, uh, Melissa?
Okay, so, um, if you could come back for the work session with the, uh, with all the edits, um, Ron, that definitely will help, okay?
Sure. Uh, you're talking about the work session in two weeks.
Yeah, or, or, I mean, that way, because I'm assuming you want this to pass so you could put this money to, to work.
Yeah, absolutely.
Say, dude, put in that work session, like submit it to us prior, like, you know, to answering other questions so that way we go, um, we go out into the work session. And constantly decide what to do, uh, what, what to do then, okay?
Sure.
If everything looks clean, um, you know, um, that's also like, uh, it'll come move like to the second, um, to the, to, to the reading, but I think we definitely took to have a couple of questions answered. Okay, thank you so much. And, uh, and definitely look into, uh, the line item, cross-reference them with them because definitely be easier for the public to see it and read it. Okay?
When, when you say cross-reference, what, what exactly are you?
So you should, the, so usually in the budget that has the line item, you see how like, you know, um. Constantly would on, um, reference the line item in the budget line item, whatever the number was, and Valerie, apologize if I don't have the number at hand. But she said line item, whatever, one, three, five, right? So, um, I need to, if you could put it in the format as well, so that way, once it fits into our budget, we're able to do it. So put both numbers if need be, so that way I only have to rewind and internally we have the longer digits of the numbers, that's fine. But that way, when it's added to the budget, we know specifically where we could find this amendments, uh, that's gonna be added to what section of the budgets.
Uh, okay.
Okay, so that, that will, that will help. So that with like, let's say like under grants. Now we know like all these ones are gonna be listed like number, whatever the continuation is. It's, it's there so that what we know, uh, what to look for. So as we like sorting them out to make sure that we're not, we're not putting it in two places, um, then we focus on it as well, okay?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
All right, um, I'm gonna move on to the next item, Council, uh, discussion of proposal of M, uh, W M A T A Yellow Line Turnback. Mayor and Council will have discussion that proposed W M A T A Yellow Line Turnback. So Jared, I'm gonna hand it to you for a brief discussion, brief, brief.
Yeah, no, no, I know. So I know it's late, um.
But also table.
I'm sorry?
Get also table it for next time.
Yeah.
No, it has to go out, go.
Okay, um, hey folks, so Wamata put together, um, has put together kind of a top-line proposal in their FY twenty-four budget. Um, to do a number of things, including changes to rail and bus service, um, you know, Selena had, um. Connected me to, um, Patrick, uh, Wyon and College Park and, um. Justice Solomon, Hyattsville, a number of other folks that wrote one corridor along the green line, green and yellow lines, um. Regarding these changes, so, um, Wamata is, uh. Providing more details in public hearings later this, um. Later this month, but their top-line proposals to turn back the yellow line at, um. At, uh, Mount Vernon Square instead of what it does currently, which is go all the way to, uh, Green Belt, so, um. You know, they're, they're in general preserving frequency across the systems, but what they're doing here is, uh, removing that. Removing the, um. The fact that both lines, um, currently run, uh, you know, yellow line all the way into Virginia. And green line all the way to Branch Avenue, but that both currently go all the way to, um, Green Belt, so. Um, what that does is, uh, although you're gonna be able to transfer, it removes, uh, what is currently now a one-seat ride. Uh, for residents in, um. Uh, in, 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 along the yellow line into Virginia, which as you, as you probably know, are where many of the jobs are and continue to be in this region. So I put together a, uh, letter just, you know, noting this, kind of. I was opposing the proposed changes that's consistent with what other cities in the quarter are gonna do and just kinda, you know, pointing out, um. The impacts of this particularly to our most transit-dependent. Um, riders, I will, my, the other thing I, you know, while. Service levels, if they continue to be high, you, obviously you can transfer. Um, I just wanna remind folks what happened during COVID. Uh, and also really, I mean, when, uh, when part of the rail fleet goes out of service and frequency dropped to twenty minutes on each line. Um, you know, now that there, if, if you have the same dynamic you did before. Uh, if you potentially have a twenty-minute wait on the green line and then potentially a twenty-minute wait on the yellow line. Um, in a worst-case scenario, instead of at least a one-seat ride, if, if, uh, Metro takes. A huge portion of the fleet out again. So that's what the letter I put together is in the packet, um, just kind of. Generally oppose, uh, opposing that change, um, it's gonna be consistent with what other cities, uh, submit and just, you know, asking them for opportunities for. Our residents and others to provide feedback, so that's it.
Thank you. That was the next, uh, an excellent long summary of the letter and, uh. And the situation, uh, Council, um, I was also writing a letter and they approved to send as well. Uh, so that is, this is a unity effort to make sure that our residents are heard, as you guys heard and know, um. Um, very large amount of our residents commute. So this is very important for them to be able to have accessibility to the locations they are going. All right, Council, um, if you're good at approving, thumbs up and we could go through it. Valerie, you're good? Jimmy, you're good?
Yes.
Jared, you're good? I don't see, oh, Luke, oh, yeah, Luke, you disappeared of a sudden. All right, so we're all good, so same thing, Melissa, this is already in a letterhead, thank you so much. Uh, I mean, tomorrow, you know, I'm gonna be at the school starting like at the crack of dawn, but, um. Um, have, have it ready, we'll sign and send that and send right away. Jared, if you could like let us, um, hit us to word. Who to send? You know, that will help, okay, if you could get your guidance on that one.
Yep, sounds good.
All right, perfect, thank you so much, all right. And thank you for putting this letter together and for, um, talking to, um, to our other allies in the other, in the other cities, um. You know, working to, we've done a good job of trying to work with the other cities on, on stuff as this. So that way, um, they, they hear us and impact, um, especially when it impacts like Route One together. All right, so moving on to vote on approval of minutes. The Mayor and Council will vote on approving the minutes, December twelfth, special legislative meeting, December twenty, special legislative meeting and work session. January third, twenty twenty-three legislative, um, meeting. And, um, this minutes were presented to us previously. If it wasn't in the last work session, it wasn't the legislative session, but this has been presented and we've had more, at least two weeks or more to look at them. Council, um, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Seconded.
Is properly moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, any abstentions? Objections? Hearing none, uh, this minutes have been approved, uh, thanking Melissa and Gabby for. Making sure you do the, the great way of, of handling minutes and putting us up to date. If you notice, this is a January third. So literally we're, um, following like, you know, we're basically on track, all right. Moving on to item number eighteen. Can have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved, thank you, staff.
Seconded, yeah, thank you.
Is we probably move in second, any discussion? There was a bunch of thank yous, um. So, um, any objections? Abstentions, hearing none, um, this meeting has come to an end, thank you so much, uh, staff, residents, uh, Council also for being here. Um, our department heads as well, Chief, I see you there as well, Bill, I saw you there as well. Uh, Jared, Melissa, thank you guys so much and the whole entire team, okay, so. Have a good night, we'll see you guys in two weeks and, um. Um, I'll see you guys, like, some of you guys will see you eight o'clock in the morning tomorrow, bright and early at school. All right, have a good night and, um, I'll see you guys soon, bye.
Yeah, Ron.